Hello Lisa.
Thank you Kyle. It is 7:04, 7:05. We are back in regular session. Welcome to those who have just joined us. We just finished up our workshops. And we will move at this time for the Great Vine Independent School District, Board of Trustees and Central Administration. We will pause for a moment of silence to reflect on our continued successes of our district, the safety and the well-being of our students, our dedicated teachers and staff, and our supportive community. Thank you all very much. We'll move on to our pledges of allegiance.
I will.
Thank you.
Oh, ready? I pledge allegiance.
To the flag.
Flag. Of the United States.
The United States of America.
To the Republic.
To the Republic. For which it stands.
One nation.
One nation.
One. Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honor the Texas flag.
Flag.
Allegiance to thee.
The Texas.
One state.
Under God. One and indivisible.
Thank you Dad. Now we'll move on tonight. We're gonna have our lead 2.0 highlight, Dr. Ryan.
Yes, the last couple of board meetings that we've had have been, of course, virtual like this one, and we've not been able to have a lead 2.0 highlight or even recognitions. And tonight, we've got both. And so we'll start with the folks from Heritage Middle School who have just picked up a fantastic moniker to go along with them at Heritage Middle School. That's an avid demonstration school. So with us tonight, we've got Dr. James Whitfield, our principal. We've got Caitlin Kinder, who's our avid district liaison, and Melissa Richards, who's our avid site coordinator at HMS. And I'll pitch it to Dr. Schnouts for any other introductions he may have.
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Ryan. So Heritage Middle School is a campus that has just an amazing culture. It's a culture of just high engagement, both students and staff. It's a culture of high achievement, and that's something that continues to elevate year after year. And a big reason, a key contributor to that is the avid program there at HMS. And so we're excited to celebrate that they've become a national demonstration avid campus. And we're excited to see how that has impacted students, and that will continue to, they'll continue to take that with them as they go into high school and beyond. And so we're excited to celebrate them tonight. And so I believe Dr. Whitfield will be, I'll be turning it over to Dr. Whitfield. I don't see Dr. Whitfield.
I was gonna say, and Dr. Schnouts, do you minds if I do a little?
I've unmuted Dr. Whitfield. Doesn't seem like I can bring him over on video.
So I'll give it to Dr. Cool.
Caitlin, Caitlin's here also.
Caitlin, yeah.
Thank you Caitlin.
Perfect. So tonight, we're gonna have Caitlin Kinder, who, as you know, is our avid district liaison, as well as Dr. Whitfield and Melissa Richards. Melissa Richards is the avid site coordinator at HMS. And that trio, along with a number of other folks on their campus, have worked tirelessly over the course of, especially the past year, but really that campus has been working towards this goal for a really long time. And so as Kyle works his magic to get Melissa over and James to speak up, I think Caitlin, I think you may be the leadoff speaker tonight. Am I correct in that?
Yes, I am.
Okay, and Melissa was going to share her slides. And if she is not able to do that, I can pull them up really quickly and share them maybe from my screen.
Okay, yes, they are texting both of them. And if you could pull that up right now, I could kick us off, and then we can see if we can get them in here as we go.
Can y'all hear me?
Yeah, we can hear Melissa and James. I just can't get them on camera.
Okay.
So Suzanne, I'm gonna share, for you to share the screen.
You can. Melissa or Caitlin, will you shoot that back over to me really quickly? It's not where I thought it was going to be.
Yes. Awesome. I just shared it with you.
I will let you go ahead and speak, and within about five seconds, I'll have this up and running.
Okay. Okay, well, I am so excited to be here to talk about something that I knew we would get to talk about one day. It just has not been a quick journey. So I'm excited to talk about HMS officially having the title and the recognition of being an avid national demonstration school. And so when she does get it pulled up, you'll see that that avid mission is to close the achievement gap by preparing all students for college readiness and success in a global society. And really, HMS has aligned their mission to that mission on purpose. You know, we really decided quite a few years ago, I was an avid teacher, the insight coordinator of that. And this weaves through everything that we do. And if it's what we believe, let's talk about it. And so talking about closing the achievement gap, and that avid really recognizes that the achievement gap is not inevitable, it is created. And so how can we use this systemic thing to make sure that all students have limitless opportunities and that all students are held to high expectations, but supported to get to those high expectations? And so that is what being an avid national demonstration school means. It means that you are modeling that day-to-day through your systems, instruction, leadership and culture. And so when you go on to the next slide, there is an image of the benefits of being an avid national demonstration school. And really what it means is, you know, we hear this recognition right now, but this has been something that we've been getting coached on for quite some time. And so when I look through those benefits of being an avid national demonstration school, the ones that really stand out to me are holding showcases for educators from around the country or world who want to come learn what it looks like to be an avid demo school in a middle school. You also do get some practical perks, so things like free subscriptions to avid resource or weekly. You get first looks at curriculum. But my favorite one is really just this idea of continuous improvement of systems and practices. I don't think I've grown more in anything in my professional life than I have through being a part of this process with avid's coaching. Because they are, I mean, they came for a mock visit one time, and we were saying, you know, we really are pushing focus note taking. It's a strategy school-wide. And they were like, oh no, you're doing, you're doing step one and two of focus note taking. What are your goals for three, four and five? You know, so it's just that you really grow from being an avid demo school. And I think that's something that is valuable for everybody, you know, to have coaching and constant feedback to be the best you can be for our kids. And so you'll notice on here, only 200 avid schools are avid national demonstration schools out of over 7,000. And we have avid throughout the globe. And so it's really cool to earn that, because when I say earn it, that is the truth. They don't just give these things out. So I'm gonna pass it off to Melissa Richards, the avid site coordinator at HMS.
Hi, everyone. I am the avid site coordinator, and I teach seventh and eighth grade avid at HMS. I wanted to take you through our avid journey at HMS, because this really wasn't something that happened overnight. It really and truly took all hands on deck, a lot of hard work, passion and commitment to that avid mission of closing the achievement gap and ensuring that all students are college and career-ready. So our journey begins in 2011, when HMS implemented avid and had an enrollment of a whopping 20 avid students. In 2014, the avid elective grew to two sixth grade avid classes, and we saw the start of the avid site team. This is worth noting, because this group, it is completely composed of teachers, administrators and even community members, all volunteer-based. The power of this team and their work has been invaluable at HMS. They create change school-wide and are really the ones behind the magic of avid school-wide. So in 2017, we saw a shift school-wide, as our leadership team made it priority to have as many teachers avid-trained. So through the WICAR workshop that Caitlin and Kinder has through the district, we were able to get 70% of our staff avid-trained. This is imperative to our journey, because this was really a turning point where our beliefs were aligned as a campus school-wide. In 2019, we continued to take action with our aligned beliefs by actively moving more students into accelerated classes with the avid support. And so now we're at 2020, where avid is our system. It is just the way we operate. It is not just an elective class, but it really is systematically how we ensure that every single student is college and career-ready. So we have 180 avid students, so 24% of our student population is an avid student. This year was really exciting, because we had over 100 applicants for the upcoming school year. We currently have 27 active site team members, as pictured in the presentation. And of course, we have reached our journey to becoming the avid national demonstration school. So now I'm going to pass it to Dr. Whitfield, if he's on, I'm not sure.
Yes, ma'am, I'm here. Thank you so much, Ms. Richards. I'm James Whitfield, and it's a pleasure to just share some of this information with you. What an amazing journey it has been. Thank you for sharing those all about the journey. So I'm gonna talk about the avid effect. And so everything that we do at HMS, it runs through these four domains: instructions, systems, leadership and culture. And so with instruction, if you go into any campus on HMS or any classroom at HMS, you're going to see WICAR throughout. And so the vocabulary that the teachers use, we, teachers have autonomy to do their thing in their classroom and be who they are. But our students aren't having to guess from class to class as far as which strategies. Teachers don't have to teach strategies. They get to teach the content through the strategies. And so from class to class, students don't have to guess, teachers don't have to guess. We're all on the same page. As far as systems, you know, we have that site team, which is the, that is the lifeblood of our campus. They're the ones that we work through real issues with. We sit down, we have book talks. We go through the deep-rooted issues that exist within our systems, and we break those things down and try to push forward to make sure that we're having the best possible experience for our students. They are a huge part of that leadership piece in our strategic planning. Like I said, we go through root cause analysis. One of the things that we discovered is we're not, we weren't getting a large enough portion of our underserved populations in those pre-AP classes. And we know that all students need access to that highly rigorous coursework. And so we broke down those barriers to make that happen, and that happened with that leadership team. And then, you know, the foundation of any system is that culture. And so we have a positive college-going culture on our campus. We want our kids to be college and career-ready. So whatever that next step is, whether it be going to eighth grade or crossing the street over to Colleyville Heritage, they are going to be ready for whatever that next step is because of the foundation that is avid. And so avid, like I say, it's not just an elective at HMS. That's what makes this demo school so special. It's not just an elective. It's the DNA, it's the heartbeat of the campus, and everything we do runs through that. And there's a couple of quotes there. I won't read those word for word to you, but I think what is, what's impressive about what our teachers have to say is that at the top, you have Ms. Hannah Cohen, who's a sixth grade ELA teacher. This is her first year on the campus. And then you have Ms. Robin Johnson, our eighth grade biology teacher and our science department learning leader, who's been there for 20 years. And whether it's somebody that's been there for one year or 20 years, they can see the increase in engagement, the tools that they've been equipped with to help students think critically about their work, to be organized, take on leadership roles and just be empowered self-regulated learners throughout the course of their journey. So the avid effect, both for teachers and for students, has helped our campus grow in meaningful ways. And so we're so, so proud of the work that our staff and students have put in to, for us to reach to this point. And so in saying that, we have one of our amazing rock star students. Braylon, are you, are you with us? Mr. Braylon Blakely?
Just one second. Let's see here.
We're working all kinds of technological magic.
Braylon is one of, he is one of our amazing students. He has been in the avid program. I'll let him share a little bit more about himself, but he's been, you know, the whole, his whole middle school journey. And I think you're gonna really love Braylon as we do, when you hear from him.
Braylon, can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you.
All right.
Okay, so, hello everyone. So the way that I've been impacted by avid is that back in grade, when I was picking my classes for middle school, I didn't have the confidence to join a pre-AP class. So what did I, I end up doing was, I had, most of my classes were on level, and only two of my classes were pre-AP, because I didn't feel confident enough in thinking that I could do it. And I just wanted to just do the bare minimum. But then I applied for avid, and then when I was doing my interview, Ms. Kinder was telling me how there's this system called tutorials that can help me when I'm struggling in any of my classes. So I took this information, and it made me feel, this made me feel a little bit more confident in myself, knowing that I have some, I have an elective that can help with these struggles I'll have. So I told my parents, and they said that I should just try out all pre-AP classes and see how it goes. And what did I end up doing was that I put all pre-AP classes on my schedule, and I've gone through my middle school year with all of the pre-AP. And because of the help of avid, I haven't had any struggles. I haven't had any problems. Because I always know that if there's anything wrong, I can always look up to avid and they can help me out. It's so amazing that how one, how just one elective can make such a big change in one school. And that's why I think that all school, that avid should be school-wide, because like the strategies that, the strategies that we learned, like the WICAR strategies. If you go in our hallways, just take a look and see each classroom, you'll see how, how every teacher has the, has avid certified or and avid-trained near their doorstep. So then that like automatically lets you know that this is a school that loves avid, takes like its advantages, and it just, that's how we became a demo school. And like the fact is that WICAR, it stands for writing, inquiry, collaboration, organization and reading. And all of these skills can be used in any lesson, in any subject. That's how great it is. And no matter like, no matter like, if you're struggling, and no matter if you need help, we always have avid here for us. And it's just, it's just so amazing how we start, how I started off in middle school, not wanting to really do anything, but like not wanting to go above and beyond the classes that I picked. But after I've gone into avid, gone through years, man, I just love it so much. Thank you.
Thank you so much Braylon. So that, that is our student speaker. I'm glad we got to get, get him on here and share that with y'all, because he is definitely inspires all of us. So that is, that is our spotlight on what it means and what the impact is of being an avid national demonstration school.
Thank you guys so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. So see everyone now, do we have any questions, or Jesse?
Can you hear me?
We can.
First of all, congratulations on that recognition. It is awesome. Just a couple of questions. As far as the recognition, is this something that is up for renewal every year, or once you get it, you become part of that elite group and that stays with you until, you know, as long as the avid program's on campus? How does that work?
So it is, you get either a one to three-year validation. And so what is actually really exciting about HMS is we actually went into closure before they got to do their official demonstration day. And avid decided to go ahead and certify them based on their mock visit, because they were impressed on that visit, and they certified them with a three-year validation. They don't have to revalidate for three years, which is the, that's the best one you can get. And yeah, they don't just let you keep it. It's gonna be work to keep it, but that's kind of, that, to me, that's exciting. You know, you get, you get to set those goals continually, so.
Excellent. Now, my second question, in terms of the role of the parent, how, how do we, or how do you interact and engage with the parents of those avid students during, during these years that they're going through the program?
Jesse, do you wanna speak to?
Yeah, so basically, the avid works as a support system for our students, our avid students. So we really, the avid stands for advancement via individual determination. And that ID part, the individual determination, that's what we're looking for in our avid elective students. So we don't really rely on, you know, the parental support, because we are pouring into them and empowering them with student agency for them to really take ownership of their learning and the organization, all of the foundational avid strategies that we teach them in class.
Okay, and that's a good thing, but I guess my point is that, given the fact that they're doing some awesome things, is that not somehow not conveyed to the parents? Or how, I mean, that, that sounds like that would be an awesome opportunity to engage them in that, so.
And then also, in our Bronco Bits newsletter, we have a college corner where we do our learning liaison, who actually shares out college tips for, to foster that college and career readiness for, for parents and students. So, and that's the beauty too, of us being avid school-wide, that not just the students that are in the avid elective are receiving the awareness and knowledge.
And I would say too, for the avid elective, that, you know, the parents are impacted by the things their avid kids are learning all the time, and we hear that a lot. You know, they bring the strategies home, and their parents are getting to learn about it. I know at HMS, and Melissa can speak to this more too, she has parents that are on that 27-person site team that was in that picture. So they, they're volunteering too, and they're a part of, they're a part of it. They volunteer on the field trips. And so that is, that's actually a part of the CCI to get avid demo is family involvement through different.
Well, thank you. Yeah, that's what I was looking for. So thank you.
Becky.
Yeah, this is more a question and comment for Braylon. I guess he's an eighth grader going into ninth grade this year, and I really appreciated hearing from him how important it was to him to be surrounded at his campus, in his building, by things that reinforced the avid strategies. I think that's a really important point to take away from him tonight. And I'm curious what classes he's looking forward to at the high school, particularly ones that maybe he would not have considered previously had he not been in avid. I really like the fact that, you know, he found a lot of confidence in his ability that he already had to handle all, an entire schedule of pre-AP classes.
I don't know if he's here, but Melissa, do you know what he signed up for? I know that you coached them through all.
Yeah.
Oh, he is?
Yeah, he should be here.
There's a connection problem.
Braylon, were you able to hear my question? This is Becky St. John, one of the trustees. And I just wanted to tell you, I appreciated your comments about being surrounded on your campus by things that reinforce the avid strategies. And I was curious what classes you're looking forward to at high school, particularly ones that maybe you wouldn't have considered had you not taken avid.
Oh, so there's some of the classes I've been taking in high school, where I was looking into a lot of different classes that are like different, like some of the subjects that I'm not really as good on, so I'm like writing. Like I don't have the best handwriting. And I was thinking that, because I, because I always remember that I have, there'll be tutorials in avid that'll help me. So I put, as in, I put one of the electives that I was interested in was writing. And I have some other ones, like reading, and like some other different classes, because I know that I have avid to help me out, and I have like, I just have a family that's willing to help you with no matter what's going on.
All right, thank you Braylon. Thank you for coming tonight.
Do we have any other questions for anyone from HMS? Seeing none. Congratulations again to, and thank you for taking the time to present to us tonight. But we're very proud of everyone there at HMS. So thank you all very much.
Thank you.
We'll move, we'll move on to recognitions. Dr. Ryan?
Yes, this is our recognitions portion. Again, the first time in a couple of months that we've had recognitions. But when we started looking at this month's agenda, we realized this is the time where we usually talk to our valedictorians and our salutatorians at each one of our high schools. And so certainly, we think that one group of students that's been affected pretty much the most by COVID-19 has been the class of 2020. And these last three months of their senior year are usually some of the best. And from winding down their K-12 academic journey, planning the future, spending a lot of time with friends, experiencing their final concerts and games and theater performances and prom and award ceremony and graduation. This is when a lot of those memories of your senior year are made. And unfortunately, the pandemic has taken some of those away from them. So we really work to try to ensure that as many cornerstone senior experiences that we can provide for them that we, that we do. And so you may have seen the last week's cap and gown distribution, and our staff visited the class of 2020 at their homes. During that time, our schools also announced the valedictorians and salutatorians. And again, most of the time, we bring them into our boardroom, but this time, we'll, we'll bring them into our virtual boardroom. So we're not gonna let the pandemic keep us from this particular ritual that we have. So next, I'm going to announce our vows and sows from each school. They're on the call with us, and as I call their name, Kyle's hopefully gonna bring them over and they'll, or at least turn on their microphone, so they'll be able to say hello to us and, and talk to us a little bit. And we wanna hear from our vows and sows of the class of 2020. So first of all, from the Collegiate Academy, the valedictorian is Leslie Alvarado. Leslie?
All right, Leslie, you're with us?
Hello.
Hi, Leslie.
Hi.
There you are. All right, good deal. Our salutatorian is Anna Eckler.
One second.
All right.
Here comes Anna.
There we go.
All right, Anna, can you hear us?
Yes, hi.
Okay, good deal. So we've got Leslie and Anna from the Collegiate Academy. So if you could, excuse me, if you could just one at a time, tell us about what your plans are for this next year? And just a little bit about maybe if you went to elementary, middle school and high school here in GCISD, if you could tell us about that.
Hi, I'm Leslie. I will be attending Texas Women's University in the fall, pursuing a degree in speech pathology. I've been in GCISD since pre-K. I started at Cannon, Cross Chambers, and now I'm at Collegiate Academy. And I'm super excited. I've actually shadowed a speech pathology in our district. So I'm super thankful for all the opportunities that I've actually obtained from GCISD.
Congratulations. And I just happen to know that Texas Women's is one of the premier institutions for speech-language pathology across the country. So fantastic, that's, that's a great place for you to go. Congratulations.
Yeah.
Anna?
Hi, I'm Anna. University in the fall. I've been in GCISD my whole academic career. I went to Bear Creek Elementary, Cottage Middle, and now collegiate. And I'm also really thankful for all the opportunities I've gotten that, you know, I've gotten to have like two years of college already paid for, basically. And especially since I will be getting my bachelor's and then my master's in social work at ACU.
Congratulations. So if you'll tell us how many college hours you're graduating with? And when, when is the graduation at Collegiate Academy at TCC, the TCC portion?
I'm graduating with 68 college credit hours.
Wow.
I believe our TCC graduation hasn't been rescheduled as far as.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
And I'll be graduating with 64.
Man, congratulations. That is great to hear. And we're so proud of you. And good luck at Texas Women's and at ACU.
Thank you.
All right. Next, from Colleyville Heritage High School, our valedictorian is Sarthak Shirodia. Sarthak, joining us today? Sarthak, joining us today? There we go.
Coming over.
And the salutatorian is June Song.
June should be on as well.
Okay.
Can y'all both hear us?
Yeah.
All right, June, I don't know if you can turn your camera on, because I'll let you.
Let's see. I've been having some issues today. Can you see me?
There you go. Perfect.
There we go. Okay, good deal. Welcome, gentlemen. Congratulations on this outstanding achievement. And so what we'd like for you to do is just tell us a little bit about your GCISD academic history. If you went to elementary school or middle school here, or high school. Of course, I know that you went to high school here because you're the top two graduates. So, and then secondly, where you're headed after this. So Sarthak, can you start?
Yeah, so, hi, I'm Sarthak. I went to elementary school at Heritage Elementary. I started in first grade when I moved here. And then I went to Heritage Middle, and now I'm at Colville Heritage. And I'll be going to UT Austin in the fall to study computer science.
Awesome. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm June Song. I'm a cell. I moved here from Fort Worth ISB in the seventh grade, and I went to Heritage Middle. And then obviously, I'm now at Colville Heritage. And I will also be attending UT Austin, and I'll be majoring in electrical and computer engineering.
Wow. Well, congratulations. We're so proud. We're so proud of you guys. And I know that you're going to go to UT Austin and just continue this fantastic work that you've started here and make GCISD proud. And we're really excited for you and can't wait to see you at graduation.
Thank you.
All right, thanks for joining us. Okay, our next top graduates are from Grapevine High School. The valedictorian is Nidhish Nirur. Salutatorian is Ria Mohan. Ria?
Ria's coming over. On mute.
There we go. Nidhish, can you hear us?
Hello? Can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah, there you are. Okay, and Ria?
Hi, how are you?
Hi, hi. Glad that you're joining us. Do you have your camera on?
I think I do. Let me check one more time. I'm not sure why, but it's not letting me turn my camera on.
Okay, well, we'll just, we are going to pretend that we can see you then. And we're going to use our imagination. And but what we want to do is hear from both of our top graduates at Grapevine High School about the history that you have in the school district. So if you went to elementary school here, middle school here, of course, you went to high school here. And then possibly where you're headed after graduation from Grapevine High School. So Nidhish, can you start?
Hello, I'm Nidhish. I went to Glen Hope Elementary School, Cross Timbers Middle School, and Grapevine High School. And I will be attending UT Austin in the fall to major in business honors and finance.
Wow, congratulations. Thank you for sharing that. Ria, can you share?
Hi, I'm Ria Mohan, and I'll be attending Duke University in the fall on the pre-med track. I've been in GCISD since kindergarten, and I went to Colville Elementary, Cross Timbers, and I'm now at Grapevine High School. And even though I'm not sure what I want to major in yet, I'm super excited because I know the teachers I've had these past 12 and 13 years have prepared me well.
And it sounds like you're going to do well in politics if you ever decide to do that as well. So that's good. Thank you for sharing that. Our teachers, we're so proud of the work that our teachers are doing every single day. And it's great to see folks that have been with our districts since elementary school having such success. And we want to wish you good luck as you move on to the next portion of your journey at UT and at Duke. So congratulations.
Thank you so much.
We'll see you at graduation. Thank you for joining us. Okay, next, we have from I University Prep, our top two graduates. The valedictorian at I University Prep is Casey Gray, originally from Arlington, Texas. And the salutatorian is Caitlin Shymon, actually a GCISD student that's finishing as the salutatorian at I University Prep.
Hi, everyone. Can you hear me?
Casey, we see Casey, Caitlin, there you are. Okay, good deal. Thank you. Thank you for joining us. And what we would like to hear from you is just about your elementary and middle school and high school journey. So wherever that may be, if you could just kind of tell us where you went to elementary school, middle school, and high school? And then perhaps what you've got going after I University Prep. So Casey, as a valedictorian, can you start?
Absolutely. Thank you for having me here tonight. So I actually started in the HEB School District and then transferred over to a public school in Arlington until I joined online school, which I didn't start at I University Prep originally. I actually started in some private online schools and transferred over to I University Prep in ninth grade and have been there since. And I'm planning to go to the Abilene Christian University Honors College and major in nursing.
Awesome. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Haylen?
Hi, thank you guys for having me today. So I've been at GCIC my entire academic career. I started off in Bear Creek Elementary, and then I went to Heritage Middle School. And then I was at Colville Middle School for two years. And when I was in 11th grade, I transferred to I University Prep. I'm graduating from now. And so in the fall, I'm going to be going to the University of Texas at Austin, and I'm majoring in psychology.
Awesome. Congratulations to our top two graduates from I University Prep. We're so proud of you, and we will see you at graduation.
Thank you.
Thank you for joining us this evening. We want to close by saying congratulations to everybody that we honored tonight on their huge accomplishments. And want to say thank you to them for being leaders of the class of 2020 during this very unique time. And I know it's been most unexpected, and you know, it's really a senior year to remember. And I hope that all of our students know that we're so proud of their entire senior class. And we look forward to being able to celebrate the senior class at graduation at Mustang Panther Stadium. And that concludes tonight's recognitions.
Thank you, Dr. Ryan, and a big thank you to Kyle. It would not have been the same having a board meeting without having our valedictorians and salutatorians and being able to honor them. So pretty exciting that even though we're virtual, we still get to have them in here, and that was really neat. And I know that that was not an easy task. So Kyle, thank you very much for making sure that we can all celebrate them tonight. Will, yes, Jesse?
Yeah, and I just wanted to say a special shout out to their parents. That's an amazing feat their youngsters have accomplished, and kudos to the parents as well.
Thank you, Jesse. We'll move on to open forum, and I do not believe we've had anyone sign up for open forum. I'm not able to see everyone right now, but.
That's correct. We didn't have anyone sign up.
Correct. Thank you very much. We'll move on to the report to the superintendent, and I am having some issues, so I'm not able to see. So when we go to start voting, if I'm not able, I may have to start calling one by one. Because at this point, I can't see all trustees. But we will move on to, as long as everyone. And it looks like I'm frozen again, but can you hear me? Yes, okay. We'll move on to item A, which is always an exciting time. So we'll move on to the act on the recommendation for the Colville Heritage High School principal. Dr. Ryan?
It's one of the most important things that we do in GCISD is choose our leaders at each one of our campuses. It's such an important decision. And tonight, the first thing I'd like to do is say thank you to Dr. Groppel for his time and tenure as the leader at Colville Heritage High School. He's done such a tremendous job in engaging the community and the students and the teachers in such a positive way. Great learning culture there. It's a fantastic school. We've got great kids and great teachers, and Dr. Groppel did a tremendous job as the principal. Of course, he's moving into a new role, which leads us to this particular item this evening. Where, excuse me, where we certainly are recommending someone to go into the principal's position at Colville Heritage High School. It's not a stranger to GCISD. He's been here as an assistant principal at Colville Heritage, currently serving as the principal at Heritage Middle School. He's worked with Capturing Kids' Hearts. He has actually been a middle school principal in Birdville. And now he has earned the right to move back into the principal's chair at Colville Heritage High School. And so the recommendation is for the board trustees to approve the recommendation of Dr. James Whitfield for the Colville Heritage High School principal's position.
Thank you, Dr. Ryan. I have a recommendation. Do I have a motion? Jesse?
That we accept the superintendent's recommendation, please?
And a second?
I'll second.
Louis, thank you so much. Any questions? None, seeing none. Give me a second, see if I can see Jorge. I'm not seeing everyone. Going to wait one more. We've got one more trustee that I can't see. Seeing no questions. All those in favor? Hi. Hi, thank you. Not see everyone there. Motion carries seven zero. Now, I know we'll have comments. Can we have Dr. Whitfield brought in?
Hello, everyone.
There he is.
Congratulations and welcome.
Thank you so much. I'm so excited to be back as part of the Panther family.
We know you've got, as we say this on each one, which is true, you've got big shoes to fill. But we're so glad you made the journey across the street, and we're very happy that you're able to make the journey back across. You don't have too big of a walk to make. So we're just very thrilled to have you as the new leader of Colville Heritage.
Thank you very much.
This is not a good night for my computers tonight. So I'm not seeing anyone, so any more questions? And you know, I did this to Dr. Groppel, you know how I feel about Colville. So you know Panther pride never dies. So I'm knowing that you're going to continue that.
Absolutely. I'm just, I'm so grateful for the opportunity to go and be, what an excellent tradition of just being just a passionate, engaged community. I'm so excited that I get to continue to be with this community. It means a lot to be entrusted with this role. And so Dr. Groppel and the team there, you know, I just remembered walking in the first day when I became an AP there last year, and they made me feel like family from the beginning. As soon as I walked in that building, and I knew I was a part of something special. And so I felt that over at HMS too, and I spoke with them, you know, this morning. And you know, while it's bittersweet, I am excited to be back with my Panther family because, as you said, Panther pride, it never dies. So I'm so grateful to be part of that tradition.
We are happy to have you there, and thank you very much, sir. We'll move on to, Becky, I think Jesse had a question. Jesse?
Yeah, no, I was just going to say congratulations, best wishes, it's well deserved and well earned.
Yes, thank you so much. Dr. Whitfield, you know, you and I sat down a couple of times last year and dealt with an oil spill out in front of Heritage Elementary School. I mean, diesel spill on the side street, and the way you handled it, and the way the kids respond to you and parents and teachers. You were a good AP at CHS, great principal at HMS, and just your positive attitude, your role model from even the letter that you wrote that Dr. Ryan shared with us during this being-at-home COVID deal that you tied into a little bit of today's times, but also to your own experience. You give the dynamics of the school district, the wide breadth that we serve, and just so excited about you leading that and being able to just continue the foundation and put your personality on it. We're here behind you, and we're excited. I'm especially excited. So congratulations and look forward to great things out of you.
Thank you, Mr. Sullen.
You're welcome.
Dad?
Dr. Whitfield, I can tell from the first time I met you, I was like, who is this guy? But I can just sense the energetic and leadership qualities that you've got. And I'm looking forward to the opportunities that you have at Colville Heritage.
Thank you all, and thank you again, sir, and congratulations.
Thank you.
We'll move on to item B, act on CPR instruction requirement waiver due to COVID-19 closure. Dr. Ryan?
Yes, these next three items are items that have to be considered by the board, but are kind of make-sense kind of items that we have to have a waiver from TEA from specific requirements that we cannot fulfill because of the stay-at-home orders and closure of school and that kind of thing. So this first one is to act on a CPR instruction requirement waiver due to COVID-19 closure. School districts are required to provide instruction to students in grades seven through 12 in CPR. And if seniors have not yet completed the requirement, then they should request a waiver of this requirement from TEA. So this is just to pick up the few students that have not met this requirement before graduation. The recommendations for the board trustees to approve the district to submit a waiver to the Texas Education Agency to waive the CPR instruction requirement for the 1920 school year.
Thank you, Dr. Ryan. Do I have a motion for the recommendation?
I move that we accept the superintendent's recommendation.
Thank you, Doug, and a second?
A second. Mindy?
Thank you very much. Any questions? Seeing none. All those in favor? Motion carries seven zero. On to item C, act on missed school days waiver and instructional continuity while closed attestation status have closed but committed to providing instruction. Dr. Ryan? Please explain what all of that just meant.
That's a long sentence, but basically what it means is, this is a very important item that we, the administration is attesting to the fact that we have provided instructional support and instructional services since the moment that we basically came back from spring break. You know, we went to spring break on Friday, March the 6th. We were supposed to come back on the 16th, and we never have come back into our buildings. But we started on the 16th with a GCISD learning at home that very first day. And we do appreciate the work that occurred from our curriculum instruction, especially our CNI team that works with technology. But all of our folks in CNI came together to provide that instruction on the very first day. Uh, because it was on that first day, we continued to get funding the entire time. So this particular item is tied to our funding whenever this is provided to the Texas Education Agency. So, um, the rule is if a local education agency like a school district closed during COVID-19, which every one of them did in the state of Texas, then we must provide school missed school day waivers for closed days with a requirement that the district provide educational supports for the off-campus education of all students. And so we already talked about how we have done that since the very first day and continue to get better at it. Uh, but this particular item is to attest to the fact that we have been able to do that. And so even though the district has been closed. So the recommendation is for the board trustees to approve the district to submit a missed school days waiver to the Texas Education Agency due to the COVID-19 closure and attest to the status of closed but committed to providing instruction from the March sixteenth, twenty twenty through the remainder of the two thousand nineteen and twenty school year.
Thank you, sir, do I have a motion? Jesse?
Yes, I move that we accept the superintendent's recommendation, please.
Thank you, Jesse, in a second. Becky, thank you, second, any, second, any questions? Jesse?
Yeah, Dr. Ryan, just a quick question, do we have to provide any sort of documentation to what we've done? Uh, or is it just the waiver that we submit?
The waiver, that's a good question, the waiver is submitted, we have to continue. Uh, we've got to make sure that we we follow the number of minutes, the seventy-five thousand six hundred minutes. And we are subject to any kind of audit or anything like that, that the agency may need to be able to to prove that, but that's that's, you know, really not, not a question for GCISD. But at this point, what we submit is the the paperwork that you see that's attached to this item. Uh, and 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 then they'll, if the board provides the waiver, then they take that and then my guess is that they'll do some sort of periodic audits after this to make sure that people are doing the right thing.
Dad?
And Dr. Ryan, the waiver doesn't, I don't see any specific dates on it for March, I don't remember the date, fifteenth or whatever until May thirty-first, are are those dates gonna be part of that at all?
I believe it's a part of the attestation form that tells us exactly what dates, Brad, do you have some other information on that?
Yes, sir, so once this is approved by the board tomorrow, when Kim and I enter this into the TIL system officially, then we put those dates like March sixteenth, in the conclusion will be the the May twenty-ninth, whatever our calendar says. And so you won't see that on on this end, on the back end, you'll see that in the TIL system that goes to the state.
All right, thank you, and I can further attest that as a as a parent, I've seen the educational services continuing to be provided from from the day we got back from spring break.
Thank you, Doug, any other, any other questions? Seeing none. And I'm not able to see you all, so in order for this, if you would just say yes or nay, all those in favor?
Hi, it's Becky. Yay.
Hi.
Yay.
Hey.
Any opposed? Seeing none opposed, motion carries seven, seven zero. Move on to item D, act on the waiver for the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty instructional materials inventory requirement due to COVID-19 closure.
Yes, each year, school districts are required to conduct an annual physical inventory of all the currently adopted instructional materials that have been requisitioned by and delivered to the district to to maintain results of the inventory in the district's files. Clearly, we can't do, we can't meet that requirement because we can't get into our buildings at this point. And so we're asking for the waiver from that particular requirement. And so just to let you know, we are preparing to safely complete this process at a later date whenever we're able to move back into our buildings. So the recommendations for the board trustees to approve the district to submit a waiver to the Texas Education Agency for the instructional materials inventory requirement for the nineteen twenty school year.
Thank you, Dr. Ryan, do I have a motion for the recommendation? Becky?
I move we accept Dr. Ryan's recommendation.
Thank you, Becky, in a second.
I'll second.
Mindy, thank you very much for the second. Uh, any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor, I can see you all, raise your hand. Motion carries seven zero. Move on to item E, House Bill Three, Reading Academy memorandum of understanding with the Meadow Center, Dr. Ryan.
Yes, in the workshop previous to this board meeting, we heard from our instructional folks about a new requirement from House Bill Three of reading academies for many of our teachers. And so in accordance with House Bill Three, are related to the completion of these reading academies by every educator who works with students in grades kindergarten through three before the end of twenty twenty-two, the twenty twenty-two school year, uh, GCISD will be utilizing the Meadows Center as a vendor for the blended model of self-paced online training for the academies beginning in the twenty twenty, twenty-one school year. The recommendations for the board trustees to approve the inclusion of training for reading academies in the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one budget and approve the memorandum of understanding with the Meadows Center pending final approval of the contract terms and conditions.
I'm sorry. Mindy, are you making the motion, I'm sorry?
I move that we accept Dr. Ryan's recommendation.
Thank you, Mindy, in a second.
I second that.
Thank you, Doug. Uh, any questions? Jesse?
Yeah, Dr. Ryan, I just, as far as the MOU, is this what we're doing tonight? Is, would that be the three years that it's gonna be that the court will be involved of our teachers? Or or is this something that we'll do every year and and evaluate that, or how will that work? Is this MOU taking care of the the three-year, is this like a three-year contract, I guess is what I'm asking?
My understanding, it is a three-year commitment. And so we would not have to bring it back to the board under normal circumstances. Uh, you know, we say that because we're not under normal circumstances and we don't know what that might look like in the future. Uh, but at this point, it is a three-year agreement.
And I guess my other question is that what happens to this agreement in the event that things change? I.e., you know, we end up having to shift gears again next school year and 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 subsequent years. Is there, is there any verbiage or language in here that somehow that is waived? Or I just, I'm, you know, I was just trying to see if it stated anything like that, any exceptions to unexpected circumstances? They could.
Paula may have some information about that.
Not necessarily in relation to circumstances changing, but that's part of the reason that this is pending a legal review and negotiation of that piece. Of course, this is a mandate by the state that you put this program in place, but one of the things we have asked for as well as a non-appropriations clause, should that become necessary? And certainly we can look into, you know, if a rulemaking body makes a change and that would change the way in which this is, uh, the district is gonna go about this, then we could, we can certainly include some language about that.
Thank you.
I missed some of the, did you get your, did you have a questions, Jesse, or do?
No, that was it, I got it answered, thank you.
Thank you, Jesse, any other questions? And again, we had the workshop earlier and they did a wonderful job explaining exactly what this this entailed. So we really appreciate that time with for them with them also. Uh, no other questions, all those in favor? Motion carries seven zero. Move on to item F, act on donation, Dr. Ryan.
Yes, this evening, we are asking the board to support a donation from the Cotter Middle School Band Booster Club and from Colville Middle School and they're donating two soundproof doors to replace the regular wooden doors leading into the practice areas of the band hall. These acoustic doors will block any sound from the band hall into the band practice rooms. The total value of the soundproof doors is fifteen thousand three hundred and twenty-five dollars. So a pretty significant donation. Um, but if you're a musician and you're hearing music from somewhere else really close and you're trying to practice, then it's certainly distracting. Uh, you can't tell it from the Colville Middle School Band because they're fantastic, uh, but I know that this will help them out and we certainly are appreciative of the Colville Middle School Band Boosters. Uh, the recommendations for the board trustees to accept the donation of two soundproof doors for the Colville Middle School Band Hall valued at fifteen thousand three hundred and twenty-five dollars from the Colville Middle School Band Booster Club.
Thank you, Dr. Ryan, do I have a motion? Becky?
I move we accept Dr. Ryan's recommendation.
In a second. Louis, thank you. I want to say I started. Is there any way as a parent, I mean, this is coming from a parent of someone that was in band. Is there any way we we can, we can order one of those doors for our house? Especially when you're a beginner saxophone player, it, uh, it was pretty brutal at times, so. We do want to, he's, he's good now. Um, and that is a lot of fundraising. So, any questions? And then all those in favor? I'm gonna have to ask, I see Mindy.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, Jesse?
Yes.
Becky?
Yes.
Jorge? Louis?
Yes.
And I'm a yes, that's seven, motion?
I'm a yes too.
No, no, it's you, Doug, I'm sorry. Motion carries seven zero. Move on to item G, act to schedule a public meeting to discuss budget and proposed tax rate, Dr. Ryan.
Uh, yes, I'll ask Diane to provide just a little bit of extra information, but just to, just to be clear, uh, this is just to schedule the meeting for the, to discuss the budget and the tax rate. We're not setting the tax rate or anything like that tonight, this is just setting the date for a meeting to be able to do so. Uh, the school board may adopt the budget and tax rate after the public meeting or the board may adopt the budget and wait to adopt the tax rate at a later date, which is what we do in GCISD. And in June, the board will adopt the budget for the twenty twenty-one fiscal year and the tax rate will be adopted in either August or September. Diane, anything else you'd like to add there?
Yes, I do want to add just a little bit of explanation to this, just with House Bill Three. This is something we do every year, it's just part of the the legal requirements of the budget process. Um, but I do want to point out that, um, for House Bill Three, um, we've talked about the tier one tax rate that will be calculated by TEA. And so, um, starting July eighteenth, um, we will have the ability to input our certified values from the appraisal district um, into the portal for TEA to calculate our tier one tax rate. Um, that's going to be based on whatever those certified values are. Um, but the state has set the maximum tier one tax rate to be ninety-one point six four cents. And so we are going to publish that, the maximum tax rate of ninety-one point six four cents, on the MNO side, uh, plus the five golden pennies. Um, we've talked a little bit about that, that fifth golden penny we have. Um, we are going to hold a workshop in July to talk more details about this. So tonight, this is just what we're going to publish. And the reason I'm going ahead and doing that fifth penny is because that's the maximum our MNO tax rate can be. If we're below that, we don't have to incur the cost to publish the ad again. And so that's just, I just wanted to explain to you why we're using that maximum tax rate.
All right, thank you, Diane. Uh, the recommendation is for the board trustees to schedule a public meeting to discuss the budget and proposed tax rate on June the fifteenth, twenty twenty, which will be held in the boardroom of the GCISD Administration Building at three zero five one Ira E. Woods Avenue, Grapevine, Texas, or a video conference, in which case the link to the meeting will be provided in the newspaper publication. The proposed tax rate for publication will be shown as one dollar point three two three one cents.
Thank you, Dr. Ryan, we have a motion, do I have a recommendation? I mean, I'm sorry, we have a recommendation, do I have a motion, how about that? Becky?
I move, I move we accept Dr. Ryan's recommendation to set the dates.
Thank you very much, in a second. Jorge, thank you very much, any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor? Motion carries seven zero. Move on to item H, act on amendment number one to the energy savings contract with Synergistics LLC.
Yes, as the board knows, we've partnered with Synergistics for several years and have had some significant savings. And so I'll turn it over to Paula for some information from Synergistic.
Thank you, Dr. Ryan, and as I begin, I'm gonna ask Kyle to go ahead and bring Mr. Pace over. He is joining us this evening from Synergistic. Lynn Pace is Vice President of Client Development. Um, and he's gonna be reviewing a few key elements of the program with you here momentarily. Um, this is one of those statutorily authorized types of programs that school districts can participate in. And and we learned several years ago when we began our partnership with Synergistic just how important it is to have not only a person in the field that's dedicated to just this, uh, but also a company and their resources in support of that and support of the school district and looking at your program, what you're doing, how you're doing things uh, in order to achieve your ultimate goal, which is to reduce the amount of energy ultimately that you're using. And trustees may recall that several years ago, there there's a mandate upon school districts to put strategies in place to reduce consumption use. And so in in our case, that's electricity, gas and water that you're looking at. So, uh, let's see, I see Lynn's name, I don't see his video just yet.
Can you hear us, Lynn?
I can hear you, can you hear me?
There.
There he is.
Good evening, everyone. I will share a presentation, is that correct, Paula?
Yes, sir.
Go ahead and pull.
Trustees, you do have that in your packet, that makes it easier to view.
Actually, I started on the wrong page. Folks, first of all, let me thank you on behalf of everyone at Synergistic for the trust that you've shown us over the last five years in allowing us to partnership, to partner with you in what's really been a journey from good to great. Because in reality, the Grapevine Colville Independent School District was a good conservation perspective and energy usage perspective at the time that we partnered with you. Particularly when you begin to compare it with other organizations, school districts in the state with which we had partnered. As a matter of fact, at the time that we partnered with you, the district was the eleventh lowest uh, in energy use index of all of the clients that we were working with that were reporting data to us at that time in the state of Texas. Uh, but again, this has been a journey for you from good to great. And as a result, today, you're actually the sixth lowest in the state of all of the clients that we worked with. And again, let me point that, point out that this is in the amount of energy that you're using per square foot. Uh, this is just a raw reduction in your energy consumption that no one can dispute and that you have so many reasons to. this, at the least, maintain it, but if possible, even grow it. And our preference, of course, as a company, would be that you would allow us to continue to partnership with you in an extended contract past this initial term that we've been involved with. But regardless of whether you choose to continue with us or without us, most importantly of all, please commit to continuing these efforts. What you've done has meant so much to your school district. It's meant a lot to our world, to our environment, to our nation. And I know I sound like I'm preaching, but if everyone in the country did what you did, we would be a much, much better off country. We wouldn't be dealing with some of the crises that we deal with from an energy standpoint. Because again, you've set just such a great example. And to just put that to you in the form of statistics, over the last five years, your cumulative cost of water since today has amounted to nearly $2.7 million. That's money that you would have spent on utility bills had you not partnered with Synergistic and implemented really a micromanagement of the way you use energy, and more importantly, driven a culture of energy conservation within your school district. That's the money that you've been able to avoid spending. And again, that's, that is extremely significant. Just your raw reduction in energy use is also very significant, and particularly when you consider that, again, at the time that we began working with you, you were not slouches by any slouch of the imagination when it came to the way that you were using energy. And then, over the last five years, this next number of 4,032, that represents the number of times that our personnel, specifically the embedded energy specialists that we have in place at Grapevine Colville, has been in use. And those audits don't occur typically during what you would call a Monday through Friday nine-to-five type of schedule. Majority of those audits have been conducted during times when your skill, when your buildings have not been in session on weekends, on holidays. Again, it's part of our micromanaging the way you use energy. We're out there making sure that when you shouldn't be using much, if any, any energy, you are not. And the best way to make that happen is for us to be out there physically. And last, but most certainly not least, because this is, this is really third-party validation of what you've done. You've been recognized by the energy, by the EPA through Energy Star. Seventeen of your buildings, your seventeen educational facilities have all been recognized by Energy Star as leaders in energy reduction. And that's no small feat. The requirements for Energy Star certification are very strict. It's not even just a measurement of energy that's been reduced, but it's also ensuring that that energy reduction did not come at the compromising of the integrity of your learning environment. In other words, inspections had to take place by engineers of your facilities in order to receive those certifications. And those inspections ensured that lighting levels were at an appropriate level. It ensured that CO2 levels were maintained at an appropriate level. In other words, you did it the right way. When you conserved energy, when you reduced your energy use, you did it the right way. This graph right here is really just designed to very quickly illustrate for you where you started today, that drop in energy use there. And this graph was actually put together back in November. But it's also going to be telling you, it can also tell you where you could be. Frankly, Synergistic believes that as well as we have done here in your school district, we think that there's even more to gain. And part of what's driving our belief that we can gain more is that we, as a company, are becoming even smarter about being able to find energy conservation opportunities. We have always been a company that's about driving culture change. We've done that through visual inspections, through the audits that I referred to before. But we're also driving more and more of that energy conservation with data and with software that we have developed. But again, this also illustrates what could happen if, it can show you where you don't want to be. That red dotted line is basically just an illustration of what could happen if you were to choose to revert back to your pre-program levels of energy consumption. Just the cost associated with that would be in excess of a half a million dollars a year, based on what you're spending on your utilities today. If that usage was to go up, that's how much additional you would be putting out, you would be having to spend, put into your utility budget. What Synergistic has done is we've offered a proposal to the district to continue our partnership with you. And that partnership basically comes with your retaining the fundamental elements and protection of our program, but at a reduced rate. The district has paid over the last several years, on average, around $280,000 a year to Synergistic. We've actually shared in the savings with you. And what we would like to propose is a 36-month extension of your agreement, but at a significantly reduced fixed fee rate. This would mean that we would still continue to be just as actively engaged in the implementation of your program going forward as we have been these past five years. We would continue to supply the onsite expertise in the form of the embedded Synergistic Energy Specialist, as well as all of the support that comes from our experts and our engineers, our environmental scientists. We continue to assist you with telling the good news of what the district is doing, especially as it relates to ongoing certifications, recertifications of your facilities by the EPA and Energy Star. And of course, we want to make sure that not just our people, but your people have access to our training, which, again, just improves the ability of the district to deliver the savings that I know your constituents expect. I mean, we're about being, we're all about being good stewards of the taxpayers' dollars and doing the best with what you have. And that's what Synergistic is about, is ensuring that you're getting the most out of this. In addition, we will continue to assist you with updated action plans to ensure that we're finding more opportunities, and we guarantee that you won't take any steps backward from an energy use index if you continue your partnership with Synergistic. The reason that we believe that we can do well for you and even do more for you than what we've done, as I mentioned before, is that while we're still fundamentally the same company that we were 34 years ago when we were founded, you know, driving a culture of conservation through inspection, we're also, we've also enhanced that process with a software suite that we have developed that, again, is allowing us to find even more opportunities faster, which all translates into even more dollars of what it has cost for you. Again, Synergistic hopes that you will trust us with an extended partnership, but most importantly, again, our hope is that you will continue the good work that you've been doing. Don't take any steps backward, especially in these days and times where every dollar counts. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pace. Appreciate your carrying that through and explaining that to the trustees. We'll go ahead and release your screen there so that everybody can see each other once again. I'll take that back. So, I think he, I think he did a tremendous job of explaining the program. And obviously, as we were looking at the end here at five years, we were asking ourselves those questions, is there still a benefit to doing this? And I believe that it is very important to maintain what we have been able to accomplish at a minimum, and still look for any additional opportunities, because we know how precious the dollars are in our budget. And it's been a successful program to this, to this point. And so, for that reason, and Diane has been a part of this analysis as well. I know we, we've looked long and hard at this and feel that it is still in the best interest of our school district to move forward with this. Dr. Ryan?
... savings contract, Addendum Number 1 with Synergistics LLC. Need to read that again?
Would you please?
Yeah, okay, yeah. The recommendation is for the board trustees to approve the energy savings contract, Addendum Number 1 with Synergistic LLC.
Thank you, sir. Do I?
This is Doug. I recommend we accept the superintendent's recommendation.
Okay. For the rendition?
I move that we, this is Doug. I move that we accept the superintendent's recommendation.
Thank you, Doug. In a second. Louis?
I'll say it.
Thank you, Louis. And any questions? Jesse?
Yeah. Can y'all hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Looking at the financial summary, and maybe Paula or Mr. Pace can answer this. So, our current contract then runs through the end of June. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So, now what we're asking is a 36 months, so that would be an extension, it's a three-year extension, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And then, what we're talking about is that over those three years, we're locking in, by signing this, we're locking in to a fixed monthly rate of $14,125. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Now, is that over the three years, regardless of what happens, it's still going to stay at $14,125?
Yes, sir.
All right. So, come next fall, if we find ourselves having to shelter home, at home again, and we go through what we've just experienced and are currently experiencing, and that is over a long period of time, what we're saying here, what we're signing into is that regardless, this is still a cost that we've got to incur on a monthly basis, whether we have school or not.
Yes, sir. It is. Understand, though, that our personnel, in conjunction with personnel of the district, work together to ensure that when your buildings are unoccupied or sparsely occupied as they are right now, we are ensuring that that absolute minimum of energy and water are being used during those times. We don't have data right now to show exactly how much money, how much usage has been reduced just in the past couple of months as a result of COVID, but we have been, as a company, helping our clients try to make lemonade out of those lemons by ensuring that they're not spending any more utilities than they absolutely have to. That means oftentimes, our people are still out in your buildings when they're unoccupied to ensure that nothing is running that shouldn't be running, or at the least, we're operating our software that ensures that if something is running, we're able to spot it when it's happening and help take steps to correct it.
Yeah, my, interesting, you said that because that was going to be my next question, whether there's been any data that we've run or that you've run that would show that. And going forward, are there any plans that we would be able to look at that?
Yes, absolutely. That's one of the hallmarks too of our program, is the data needs to be transparent for our client. We need to be able to see what it is that has happened on a building-by-building and even meter-by-meter basis. And we do regularly share that information with Paula in particular. Ms. Barbara?
Okay, all right.
Jesse, yes, I just want to reaffirm that, in fact, the specialist that we have in district has been in regular and routine communication with me and with others in our district. He has been in our buildings. He has been working and doing the very things that Mr. Pace just mentioned.
Yeah. And don't get me wrong, I mean, I love the fact that we've been in this, in this agreement, and we've had it, and it's worked, and it's been advantageous, and it's been a win-win. I just want to make sure that I understand going forward in terms of exactly what we're committing to and what we're agreeing to. So, thank you. I appreciate it.
I understand that completely.
Any other questions? None? Seeing, seeing none. All those in, I've lost you again. All those in favor? Raise your hand. Nope. Going to have to do it this way. Jesse, yea, yonay?
Yes, ma'am. Yes.
Becky?
Yea.
Doug?
Yes.
Jorge?
Yes.
Louis? Louis? Mindy?
Yes.
And then, I'm a yes. Motion carries seven zero. Thank you, sir, for your time.
Thank you for your trust.
Act on appropriation of 2011 bond surplus for capital improvements identified during the budget process. Dr. Ryan?
Yes, as it states, as the heading states there, during the budgeting process, we have come across several pretty large items that we'd need to be able to move forward on. Paula, would you take us through this item, please?
Yes, sir, Dr. Ryan. Happy to do that. The proposed list of items really address a variety of capital needs that were identified during the budget process or have been identified at some other point in time as we've been looking at our facilities, whether it be in previous years or moving forward. And as you'll recall, not everything that was ever requested for the bond program made it into the 2016 bond program. So, we knew that there were some deferred items certainly out there, and it was, you know, something to kind of keep an eye on and move to address those things that might become the most important as we go through the process. So, the variety of items there address those kinds of needs that really cannot be addressed by the operating budget, and maybe are a new mandate, which I'll mention one, that is in Kyle's world. And then, there are some for which there has been funding in the past, maybe through another bond program. In particular, 2011 bond program addressed some of the items that are on this list. Those monies were spent for that purpose. In fact, those monies lasted a lot longer than they were originally planned for in helping to cover those types of things. And now, we're looking forward, and we still have a need to be able to handle some of those things without being able to put that into the operating budget. It simply is impossible. So, one of the items that I will mention that is on that spreadsheet, happens to be the third item at the top of the capital improvements list. On the left-hand side, you'll see the word NOC. That's our Network Operations Center. Kyle will join me here in just a moment. This is a mandate out of Senate Bill 820, in terms of something that we need to have in place with respect to the servers and so forth that are part of our security system. So, Kyle?
Correct. So, part of the Senate Bill requirement around cybersecurity requires us to add additional software as well as monitoring. In the 2016 bond, we did have funds set aside, but of course, not to address these unknowns that came at the time of the bond pass. This is for what's called a SAM, which is a security information management system that will be able to analyze all of our logs and incidents to identify any anomalies on the network for analysis and response by the team. Again, this is a part of the new cyber framework that is listed under Senate Bill 820 for us.
Thank you, sir. And so, what you can see there is an allocation of basically what we have estimated to be the annual amount needed for this over the course of three years. So, this provides that bridge, if you will, into the future by taking care of the next three years. If you look at a couple of the items at the beginning of that list, it's a similar type of situation. Replacing AED units. Those have been put into the district through previous bond monies, surplus monies, if you will, and there's a need to replace those as they get into, you know, their useful life extends and they can't be recertified. So, what you see there is an allocation to be able to begin replacing approximately 64 AEDs. We have more than that, but there's a need to replace 64 of them over the course of the next, I believe, eight years. This is an allocation for just three years worth of replacement. So, again, kind of a bridge to our future. And then, I'm going to point you to the renovations of the baseball and softball fields, also about the fourth and fifth item for Grapevine High School, Colville Heritage. When we say renovations, that is... next three years. If you look at a couple of the items at the beginning of that list, it's a similar type of situation. Replacing AED units. Those have been put into the district through previous bond monies, surplus monies, if you will, and there's a need to replace those as they get into, you know, their useful life extends and, and they can't be recertified. So what you see there is an allocation to be able to begin replacing approximately 64 AEDs. We have more than that, but there's a need to replace 64 of them over the course of the next, I believe, eight years. This is an allocation for just three years' worth of replacement. So again, kind of a bridge to our future. And then I'm going to point you to the renovations of the baseball and softball fields. Also, about the fourth and fifth item for Grapevine High School, Colleyville Heritage. When we say renovations, that is really to laser grade the infield and do some work on those grass fields. You know, we've had, in particular, the Grapevine High School field for many years, Colleyville Heritage as well. What I wanted to clarify about the monies that are allocated there is that is to be able to do that type of work to those fields at least twice over the course of the next several years. So we would probably begin with one campus this coming year. Of course, all of this is predicated on going through the procurement process, so I can't tell you exactly when, but we would start with one campus, the following year do the other campus, and switch back to the initial campus and so forth. So, over the course of four years, we would have done this type of work to these fields twice during that time. This is a safety issue as well as a playability issue for our baseball and softball fields. We want to make sure that our, our athletes are safe, and if you develop too much of what they refer to as an infield lip, that can create problems, and that's part of the reason for the laser crating and so forth. It would be a lot easier, and I'll just say this now, if we had chart fields, but that is not what we have. We're dealing with real grass, real clay, and those types of things. So just a couple of items that I wanted to point out to you there. If you're wondering why the amount for Colleyville Heritage is a little bit crater, there is actually a different design at that field than what we have at Grapevine High School. And to address this particular field with more running lanes, it actually has more sod to take out and replace, if you will, in order to achieve the same safety and playability factors that we would have. I hope that the other items that are listed are self-explanatory. Obviously, I'll be subject to your questions, but with that, Dr. Ryan, I'll let you make the recommendation from the surplus funds.
Thank you, Paula. The recommendations for the board trustees to approve the appropriation of 2011 bond surplus funds for the capital improvement projects listed on the spreadsheet in the amount of $1,968,869.
Thank you, Dr. Ryan. Do I have a motion for the recommendation? Cannot see you, so go ahead and just let me know.
I may that we accept Dr. Ryan's recommendation.
Thank you, Mindy. In a second?
I'll second. This is Jesse.
Jesse, thank you so much. I have a second. Do we have any questions? Again, you need to just let me know. Hearing no questions, move on to the vote. I can't see you, so I'm going to go one by one. Mindy, yea or nay?
Yay.
Becky?
Yay.
Doug?
Yay.
Jesse?
Yes.
Jorge?
Yes.
And Louis?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Motion carries seven zero. Thank you, Paula.
Thank you.
Move on to item J. Consider an act on adoption of an order authorizing the remarketing of outstanding Series 2012B bonds of the Grapevine Colleyville Independent School District. Delegate to an authorized officer the authority to approve the remarketing of the bonds include, including approving a remarketing agreement and re-offering memorandum and establishing certain parameters for the approval of such matters. Dr. Ryan?
So that's a lot to say that we're, we're trying to do some work to basically work on refunding some outstanding bonds that are there to save taxpayer dollars. And so, Diane, I'll let you take it from here for an explanation, and then, then I'll provide the recommendation.
To talk about in detail the order that you're approving tonight, but I wanted to kind of just give you a summary before we, we get to that point. We currently have, our Series 2012B bonds are with a variable interest rate, and it was a three-year interest rate term that's set to expire in August, on August 1st of this year. So, we have two options to, to work on that interest rate. We can go out to the market and obtain another variable interest rate, and then select the interest term that we would want, want to do, or we can go out to the market and fix that interest rate through the end of the, the maturity date on those bonds. And so based on what's going on right now in the market, the recommendation is that we, we go ahead and fix the interest rate. With this remarketing, our goal is, one, to get the lowest interest rate possible and lock it in through the maturity. It, we will make sure that that interest rate is below 2%. That's part of the parameters. And the other goal is that we decrease the number of years to maturity by nine years. So, right now, these bonds are set to be repaid in August of 2031. With the remarketing, these bonds would be paid off by August 31st of 2022. So, the goal is lower the interest rate and then also shorten the time to maturity. By fixing this interest rate and cutting off those, those years on the maturity, it's estimated to decrease our future interest costs by 4.7 million. So I will let Josh, is Josh here? I will let Josh actually go through all of the legal parameter, the, the legal information on what you're actually approving tonight, which is the bond parameter order.
Good evening.
Josh.
There we go. How's everyone doing tonight?
Hi, Josh.
Well, this is a fairly straightforward parameters order. Essentially, all you're really doing is remarketing these bonds to a fixed rate of interest. The good news, when we talk about a remarketing versus a refunding, is it minimizes costs. We don't have to go back to the rating agencies. But the way the parameter order is structured is, we cannot extend maturities. We have to achieve a yield on the new bonds of somewhere less than 2%. We cannot extend the final maturity beyond August 1st, 2022, and then the fixed rate period will expire at the final maturity dates, which is neither here nor there. So, from a timing standpoint, if the board so chooses to move forward with this tonight, we would be in a position to lock in the interest rate in mid-July. Just to give you an idea, I know there are some interest rates in your package, and you can see what those look like, but rates have come down over the last two weeks since we sent this memo off to the district. If you were to lock in the interest rate today and shorten the amortization to two years, the new interest rate would be 1.2%. So why mess around with variable rate when you can lock in such a short rate?
You repeat that rate?
1.28%. All cost included. That would be our recommendation, your financial advisors, to move forward with the remarketing and lock rate.
Thank you, Josh. And Diane, the recommendation is for the board of trustees to approve the order authorizing the remarketing of the outstanding Series 2012B bonds as presented.
Thank you, Dr. Ryan. Do I have a motion for the recommendation? Jesse? Jesse, unmute and make the motion, please.
I'll make it. I am so sorry. Louis, go ahead.
Go ahead, Louis.
Second to Jesse. I'm making my, we accept Dr. Ryan's recommendation to refinance the Class B bonds, reissue them at this awesome interest rate.
Second.
Thank you, Jesse. Thank you, Louis. Thank you, Jesse. Any, any questions? I've lost you, so just go ahead and, and ask the question if any.
I would like to, just to make a comment to Diane and to our finance advisors. This is just, you know, we keep, we've been doing this for several years, and we're like, it won't be like this in the future. It won't be like this in the future. And we just keep Diane and her staff and, and our financial advisors, just, it's amazing what y'all are doing and the amount of money. We were talking about a $41 million tax saving earlier in this evening. Thank you. This, y'all are unsung heroes. I know it's out there, but people don't appreciate it with all that's in the news, and y'all do a phenomenal, phenomenal job. So thank you for the advice and the guidance of being good stewards of our taxpayers' money in our school districts.
Thank you, Louis. Well said. Any questions or comments? Yea or nay? Louis?
Yay.
Jesse?
Yes.
Becky?
Hi, yes.
Doug? Jorge?
Yes.
Mindy?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Motion carries seven zero. Thank you all very much, and thank you, Josh, for taking the time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Move on to item K. Approve resolution designating person to fulfill duties imposed by Tax Code Section, Chapter 26.
Yes, this is a requirement from Senate Bill 2 that amended the Texas Tax Code and requires each governing body as a part of the tax rate adoption process to designate an officer or employee to do certain tasks, including, we're not limited to, the calculation of the relevant tax rates and the posting of information on the web. And the proposed resolution designates Colette Ballinger of the GCIC Tax Assessor Collector and Registered Tax, Texas Assessor by the Texas Department of Licensing and Regulation as the person to perform these tasks that are required. Recommendation is for the board of trustees to approve the resolution designating Colette Ballinger, Registered Tax Assessor and Tax Assessor Collector for GCISD as the person to perform all tasks specified in Section 26.04 of the Texas Tax Code.
Thank you, Dr. Ryan. Do I have a, I can't see you, so please just let me know. Do I have a motion for the recommendation?
This is Becky. I move, we accept Dr. Ryan's recommendation.
Thank you, Becky. In a second?
This is Doug. I second that.
Thank you, Doug. Any questions? Seeing none? I will go one by one again. Doug?
Yes.
Becky?
Yes.
Jesse?
Yes.
Jorge?
Yes.
Louis? Mindy?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Motion carries seven zero. That is it for the action, action items. I will move on to item L. Remainder information only. So item L is GCISD's graduate find, post-secondary enrollment, retention, and persistence report. Dr. Ryan?
Yes, for several years, we've been providing this report to the board, and we've had to do a lot of work to try to track students down and look at the places that they go when they leave us, and the kinds of information they provide to us. And so, Mrs. Tovar is here to take us through this report. And so Shannon does a great job, as always, of putting this kind of, of information together. Dr. Schnouts, anything else you would like to add as a form of introduction?
Yeah, the one thing I'll say, Dr. Ryan, is that in this grad find report, one of the, I guess, requirements that has also come out of House Bowl III is that the board create college career military readiness goals. We're looking at taking this data and aligning it with those CCMR goals that will be brought before you guys this summer, along with our goals in our campus improvement plans and the district improvement plans for 2020, 2021. So, it's, this, what you see here, the data that Shannon will present tonight, it's, this is kind of ongoing. It's going to be part of our key work in moving forward, and you will see nuggets of this again this summer when we talk about your CCMR board goals. So Shannon, cheers.
Thank you, Dr. Schnouts. Thank you, trustee. Good to see you. Can you hear me? Can you hear me? Yes, okay, good. All right, so, let's see, let me, I'm going to, let me share my screen here. We practiced earlier today, I promise. Uh-oh, Kyle. Let's see, maybe I forgot.
At the very bottom, if you turn the camera off and on, there should be a circle with like an arrow to share content.
Yep, got that. And then I push system preferences, and then...
You just have to share your screen.
Hmm. Okay, well...
She did practice, everybody.
I did practice, I promise. I had it. I was all set. Okay. I don't know. What do you think happened, Kyle? I don't have the slides. Is that right? What's the problem? Is that... Oh wait, I don't know why, but it's working now. So, here we go. Yay. Sorry for the delay. Yes, as Dr. Schnouts and Dr. Ryan were referencing, this is something that began way back in 2015, when we moved from just reporting the National Student Clearinghouse results to going ahead and actually contacting families to find out if students, where they were, if they had told us they were going to go to college, but the National Student Clearinghouse didn't find them, or whatever plans they have had post-secondary. And so this report itself is data that we compile altogether from the National Student Clearinghouse, as well as from the campuses calling and contacting families, as well as the GOES Center and the senior exit surveys. But as we go through this, I think, you know, we'll talk a lot about the high schools, but the reality is, is that this is a K-12 effort, and so it really speaks to the strength of the entire system, and not just what the work of the high schools in terms of getting students ready for college career and military readiness. So this particular work is really supporting there in our work of LEAD 2.0 Goal One, where we talk about removing barriers that limit access and opportunities for learning. Because as students are preparing to graduate and go out to that post-secondary environment, there are a very variety of barriers that they must clear. Part of our goal then is to help find out why these students are or are not successful, and all these different sort of barriers like the SAT, dual enrollment, getting your associate's degree, all those different things. So, for example, in March, right before spring break, we had over 900 juniors take the SAT at school at no cost to them, which is part of the HB3 funding. Now, this is a tremendous help when you think about it, because many of those students, they are caregivers for younger brothers and sisters. They work to help support a family. They don't have transportation. And so relying on just being allowed to take the SAT on a Saturday instead of having it at school, that is eliminating a barrier for them in terms of having access to that test, and so that they can be successful in moving on into college. That's A, is working to hold us accountable for college and career military readiness in a variety of ways. And thankfully, because of a lot of the work that we've been doing already with our, what we call graduate find, our persistence and performance reports, a lot of that work is already overlapping. And so when they began in 2018, including CCMR as a whole group for Domain One, and then across the demographic groups for Domain Three, these were relative strengths for our district. And so those percentages that you see, like in 2018, it was 72% CCMR, 2019, it was 78%, but those, through the scaling, those were actually A outcomes under the current accountability system. As Dr. Schnouts referenced, where it says CCMR board goals, that is some work that we began this spring, talking with high school principals about what are some of the areas of emphasis they see at their campus based on their data. And so here in a minute, we'll look at some more baseline data, but the real work that's begun is looking at, in ways that they are similar and the ways that they are different. So, for example, over at Collegiate Academy, when we talk about access to post-secondary barriers, or like post-secondary requirements, or going into college, et cetera, and the things that they might be focusing on in their plan for their school might look very different from, let's say, Grapevine High School and Colleyville Heritage, because a collegiate, as you know, we're working on getting those students to have an associate's degree before they graduate from high school. But ultimately, as we work through all of these, the idea- But ultimately, as we work through all of these, the idea is, is that in, over the summer, that we'll be able to come and collaboratively develop a recommendation for the board in regards to those House Bill 3 CCMR goals. And then, what we'll do is we'll have those goals and strategies for each campus, along with some progress monitoring points in the district improvement plan and in the campus improvement plans, so that we can all be accountable for work together. The other thing that you've probably talked to Deanna about before is what we're calling the HB3 student outcomes bonus. Now, I don't know if I'd really call it a bonus or not, but I do want you to have a chance to take a look at what I'm going to call the Shannon estimate. Okay, this is not official TEA numbers. This is where I was just trying to get a rough idea of what this might look like in practice, so that we can compare what the CCMR bonus outcome looks like as compared to just what's held accountable for in accountability. In these House Bill 3 student outcomes, do you see where, in each of those categories, it says "and"? So, it's not enough to just make sure that the students have the opportunity to be prepared for and successfully meet TSI criteria in both areas. They also then would need to earn an associate's degree in high school or enroll in college in the fall immediately following high school graduation. Now, my number there is only using the National Student Clearinghouse data, but that, by itself, will kind of give an incomplete picture. TEA is planning to also use Texas Higher Educated and Coordinating Board numbers. And so, that'll help maybe there's places where we don't get as good a response rate from the National Student Clearinghouse. But you can kind of get a sense of how rigorous that House Bill 3 bonus outcomes are because of where it says "and". Now, when you look at the "and", you might think, well, you know, some of those things are really outside of our sphere of influence, or whether it was outside of our sphere of control, but certainly within our sphere of influence. Because even though I can't require you to enlist in the armed forces after I helped you take the ASVAB at campus on a school day, but I can expose all the students to the variety of opportunities that are available. I can influence by having access to their school. There are lots of things that schools can do to communicate and encourage and build relationships so that we can influence students into choosing some of these things, even though it may seem like we're being held accountable for something that we really don't have direct control over. So, that is the class of 2018, kind of a Shannon estimate of where, how more stringent those outcomes are. Here's the same class, 2018, when we did our accountability ratings last fall in 2019. And so, you can kind of see again where the breakdown falls in terms of where students are finding success. And so, like, for example, you can see that students who are able to meet that TSI criteria using either one of those three tests, it's about 67% of that particular class. You can see 47% of that graduating class was able to earn a three or higher on the exam at some point, and so forth. So, we looked at this last fall, but you can see that there, where it says 78% in terms of what TEA was able to keep track of for accountability, 78% translates into that A range. And so, Domain 1 CCMR has always been a real strength for our schools. So, this is where we're going to start talking a little bit about what Dr. Schnouts referenced in terms of the board goals. What we're going to do is we need to use 2018, that class, as our baseline data. So, that's that yellow line across the top. Essentially, this is your Domain 3 student school quality status. So, it's that percent CCMR, but it's broken down across all the different demographic groups. And so, one of the things that the high schools were looking at before the closure was, what do we think would be reasonable five-year benchmarks? And what do we think would be a good goal five years from now? By the way, 2020 counts as year one. And so, what could we do in terms of developing a recommendation for our board in terms of a good, solid CCMR goal? So, here's a sample where they were looking at 95% all the way across the board by 2024. And they just kind of in this, just in this draft form to kind of have an example, they just said, well, where is that group now? And how much would they need to grow each year over five years to hit that 95%? But so, you can see there that even though, when you talk about Domain 3 accountability, we hit 100% of the targets, and so, we had an A. But you can still see that there is disparity between the demographic groups. And so, our goal there, in terms of CCMR work, is to close them. Because these are things where we have things we can specifically control, and campuses can write strategies to address them, as well as influence through encouraging moderation and relationship building. So, those CIP strategies, as well as district improvement plan strategies, would go into Plan for Learning, where we keep all, track of all of that, and then there would be some regular progress monitoring. So, we are ready and A, but there's still places to improve. So, let's then move along and say, well, how would campuses then, in terms of progress monitoring towards those goals, how do we know how we're doing in terms of making progress? So, here's one potential example. What we would be able to do is to say, well, this is one class. For example, this is the class of 2021. And back in 1617, when they were in the eighth grade, we gave them the PSAT 8, and over 1,000 students took it. And you can see there what percentage of the students were able to meet both the math and the ERW, which is the English reading and writing component, both of those benchmarks versus those benchmarks independently. And you can kind of track a graduating class over time. So, when they get closer to graduation, we can take another look at that grade level 12 for the class of 2021 and say, where do they come out in terms of their SAT performance? So, that would be how we could look at them overall, to see how are they doing? Because what SAT says is that their benchmarks are, well, we could say, on track for college based on their enrolled grade level. So, another way that we could also look at the students would be to break them across the demographic groups. And so, this is an example of on March, back in March before spring break, we gave the SAT at school to juniors, and we had over 900 juniors participate. And so, when you talk about progress monitoring, this could be another example where if a campus was really working on getting stronger performance across all demographic groups in terms of meeting your SAT or your TSI benchmarks, that you could then break it across by demographic group, and they'll be able to see it that way. Where it says met both SAT benchmarks, that's the junior year standard, because they are juniors. Where it says, or it talks about the TSI benchmarks, those are a senior year standard. They're a little bit higher, but it's still using the SAT test. But it kind of gives you an idea of where they are right now in the spring of their junior year, and where do I need them to be when they are seniors? So, talk a little bit about our GCIC graduate find and how that relates and fits in with all the things that TEA is asking us to be accountable for. It's kind of interesting, all along, the work we were doing, because it was the right thing to do. Because as a high school principal, and as a superintendent and board members, every time we say congratulations to someone crossing that stage at graduation, in whatever form graduation would ends up taking place, we want to know that that student has at least one viable plan. And if they're going out into the world, they're going to be able to execute that plan and follow through. And if that doesn't work out, that they have some sort of backup. And so, that when they call that name, I know there's a good plan, because it's simply, and it's simply the right thing to do. With the graduate find, that's where we go back and we say, okay, did they make it through with that plan? I prepared them, and so now, let's find out if they were, if they were successful. So, here is what it looked like over the class of 1617 and 18. And you can see the categories that we've used across time and how they are somewhat similar to what TEA, in some places, what TEA is going to use for accountability for Domain 1, Domain 3, for your CCMR board goals, as well as for your HB3 bonus outcomes. And you can see across there, some of the things that have kind of grown or kind of ebbed and flowed through the years, because students make different decisions based on all sorts of reasons: family, distance, financial, friendships. There's, I need a break, I need some rest, I'm not sure what I want to do. They have a million reasons for choosing what they want. We just want them to be able to, hey, if you want to go to college, if you are thinking about military, that they have all the information so that they can not end up really in undecided group. So, what normally happens is, is I get all the NSC data around that time between Thanksgiving and Christmas, and so, I put it all together, and I give it to the campuses, and they start following up with everyone who, in the senior survey, told us they wanted to go to college, but the student, the National Student Clearinghouse didn't find them enrolled in college. Now, that just means, that doesn't mean that they're not in college. It means that that particular service wasn't able to find them. And we find this particularly with Texas Tech. We can't figure out why it is, or how come that happens, but many of the students who tell us that they're going to go to Texas Tech, some students will show up on the National Student Clearinghouse as enrolled at Tech, and then we follow up with the 20 others, and we call their families and so forth, and we find out, yes, they are in fact there. So, that's going to be something for us to kind of keep watching through the years, if we see something strange on our accountability or on those bonus outcomes that we can kind of keep an eye on, knowing that the NSC, for some reason, we're just, it doesn't report all of our Texas Tech kids. The nice thing is, for those bonus outcomes, they're also going to use that Texas Higher Education Coordinating Board data. And so, hopefully, that will overcome that little bit of a problem. Okay, so after they call everyone, I compile it, and then I go back to the principals and I say, hey, this is where you are on your no-response rate. And after spring break, after everyone's had a chance to rest, they start making the round two worth of calls. Well, this year, we didn't get to have round, we didn't get to have a round two, right? Because there was quite a lot going on, and they didn't need to be calling families about where is their graduate. So, this is how the graduate find looked for this particular year. You can see that we found about 76% of the students who are either attending college, university, military service academy, trade school, some sort of post-secondary education continuing. You can see the number of students, or a percentage of students who are working or through in some sort of apprenticeship or some sort of internship, as well as the percent for students who are participating in the military in terms of enlistment. And we have a much, as I was saying, we didn't get to do that second round after spring break, we had a much higher no-response rate this year, and I think it's really has to do with that. And so, I think a lot of the students, maybe that we weren't able to capture, might still be embedded in that no-response group. But it still gives us a good idea in terms of trends. Predominantly, our students are wanting to continue their education after they graduate. We also had a slightly higher undecided rate this year compared to the previous year. So, now, we don't know yet if that's an anomaly. It'll be interesting to see what the senior exit survey says this year, although with all the uncertainty in the world right now, I think a lot of them are wondering if they are going to go off to college or not in the fall. So, it'll be interesting to see if their plans change between the senior exit survey and next fall, when it's time for them to actually enroll. So, we'll be watching for that as well. But one of the things that the campuses might decide to do is they might say, hey, we've done everything we can to get you ready to apply for college, but then you didn't show up. And so, maybe what they'll decide to do as a strategy, let's say, to help reduce that summer melt, is after graduation, everyone who said they want to go to college to do some sort of summer follow-up, make sure through the GOES Center or a counselor, or a sister principal, or Avid, or whatever group has that good relationship with that student. But then also, too, the ones who tell us that they're undecided to find some kind of way to follow up back with them to help them kind of move on into that post-secondary life. So, this is the breakdown by campuses, and I'm very excited to show you, in particular, our Collegiate Academy numbers. Because last year, we had 62 Collegiate Academy graduates, and the year before, can go on with post-secondary, and 19 went into the world of work. Now, there's nothing wrong with going straight out into work, but what I'm excited is, is that this year, we had 58. So, we had more students, kind of in a smaller group, going to work and doing other things. So, that means that they're not just saying, well, and now that I have my two-year degree, I don't need to keep going to college, that they are continuing on, and they've chosen to enroll in a four-year, a four-year school following high school and earning that initial associate's degree. I also think it's interesting, when the two large high schools have things that match. So, in terms of the number of students who are working or going on a mission trip or undecided, they tend to be about the same, and that was true last year as well. So, some of our big trends from the National Student Clearinghouse, and remember, this is just the National Student Clearinghouse data. It's not the, we've gone out and collected additional information about the students. It shows us big trends. And some of those big trends that continue to be true, although our students stay predominantly in-state, more so than going out of state. They also tend to be in public institution higher education, more so than private. And that when they're freshmen going into sophomores, that persistence staying in school, if they're in a private school, or if they're in a four-year school or a four-year public school, then they do tend to persist. And we also have years-to-degree comparisons. So, this is the National Student Clearinghouse Fall Enrollment by Institutional Level. Right there, do you see where I made like a little, I don't know, sticker? And it says 76%. That's where I added in our graduate find, follow-up call information. And, you know, what I thought that would have been a slightly higher number, yes. But then, like I say, not being able to go back after spring break and follow up with some of the families that we hadn't, had not responded in that first wave, I think maybe kind of impacted us a little bit there. But you can see overall that the big trend stays true, that our students predominantly go to a four-year university straight after high school, and that the number going straight to a two-year instead has declined.
Shannon?
Yeah.
Before we move to this other area that you're covering, I have a question on... When you look at the National Clearinghouse numbers, and then you start calling students, just to clarify, you said that you did not call students from the 2019 class?
Well, they called everyone, but they don't always get a response. And so, then they'll go back after spring break, kind of a second wave. Like, they may have called, you know, a couple of times between Christmas and spring break. They don't get a response, then I go back and I say, okay, let's do it one more time to help get that response rate a little bit better.
And you haven't done that one?
Well, no, we didn't this year, because when we came back from spring break, we didn't really get to come back. And so, in terms of all that they were asked to do, I did not come back and say, hey, let's see if we can get that response rate a little bit stronger. And so, we do have a stronger, we have a higher rate of students who didn't respond. So, I think that's what's impacted our internal numbers, yes.
Are you planning to do that?
I think at this stage, what's going to need to happen next is, since we're progressing with those college career military-ready goals, that they're going to, that the campus principals and I and the executive directors are kind of working towards making a recommendation, hadn't really asked them, but they thought that would be valuable information at this point. And we know what the trends, overall trends are enough, I think, for them to just kind of start talking about where are some of our strengths and some where of our weaknesses, and in terms of which groups of students need that additional help making it on out into the post-secondary world.
Well, I would recommend that we do this, because you, you are basically changing the process that you are using when you're comparing data year to year. So, you will see a lower number as in 2019 that doesn't really reflect reality, because you didn't make that second call. You know, so you were being, we're doing the same things for the last five, six years. So, I really appreciate, I really recommend that we do that. And then, the second thing I was going to mention is, I believe in previous years, like last year, one other thing that is kind of interesting is to see, if you're looking at, let's say, the 2017 students, that you look at the 2018, and then 2019, because we know some kids take a year off or they are working or something like that. But I think that we used to get the numbers two years after graduation. I don't, I don't see those numbers here. Are you planning to give us those numbers later?
So, we have some more things along those lines here, yes. As far as, right, so like, I didn't start the fall of my freshman year, but then I did come in two years later, that kind of thing. Is that what you're saying about, yes? Yes, okay. So, again, we can see that the big trend here on the in-state versus out-of-state, again, the big trend stays, tend to stay in-state with us. This one, basically, it looks, it's a lot of wavy lines there. I tried, I tried, I don't know, we have a new template, so I tried as best I could. I'll try again next year. But essentially, on this one, this is what I was saying a minute ago, that our students who enroll in a university or a two-year school immediately in that fall after high school graduation, that they start at a two-year school. They do not persist in terms of showing up somewhere as a sophomore. In terms of college enrollment, they do not persist as well as or as high as our other groups. So, public four-year, private four-year... So public four-year, private four-year, in-state, out-of-state, all that for the four-year or they are the private more selective schools, then you see that stronger persistent rate of up there more in, say, probably an average of about ninety-two across there. Having to do with our students who enrolled their fall immediately after their freshman year, I mean, in the fall after their high school graduation and then persisted from freshman year to sophomore. And it's not even at the same school, it's any school. So here, just to kind of get an idea, we're kind of moving towards about what trustee Rodriguez was talking about as far as how long it takes them to graduate, but also who came back to school, who didn't start that fall after high school graduation but came later. So we're progressing that way. Here are some examples of four-year and six-year graduation rates. These are from that College Navigator, so the National Center for Educational Statistics. And what you have is you can see that when you look between the fall of 2010 and the fall of 2012, those, those two groups there, what we have is you see that it's starting to increase, like UT, A&amp;M, UR, OU. Those guys are starting to see an increase in the number of students or the percentage of students who are able to graduate in four years. So something as far as what, what schools across the region are doing to get students prepared is helping to them to be more successful in terms of being able to graduate in four years. Or the six-year number stays about the same in the eighties for those, those top two that are right there. So this will be something we will continue to watch over time. It's this terms of how long does it take students? This is all students, not just GCIC students. How long does it take them to graduate from college with a four-year degree? One big thing, oh, yeah, go ahead.
On your previous, previous slide, when you showed the seventy-eight percent persistence for two-year schools. I'm assuming that's, okay, freshman to sophomore. However, if a freshman transfers from college, from, from TCC, for example, after year one, he goes to UT Austin, does that hurt that number? Because I wondered if, you know, if, are they looking at those kids just on the two-year colleges? Or are they also looking to see if they transfer to another institution?
That's a great, wondering what the National Student Clearinghouse does. They look for you if you were enrolled somewhere in that first fall after high school graduation. Were you enrolled somewhere as a sophomore? And so it doesn't matter where. So you could leave your two-year school and go to the four-year school as a sophomore, and it would not hurt the two-year school numbers, no, because you persisted somewhere.
Seventy-eight percent include people that transfer?
Yes.
Thank you.
So then, we're speaking to this idea of select initial school selectivity making a difference in terms of how long it takes a student to achieve a bachelor's degree going full, full-time. And you could see there, there's some of the selected schools that have higher rates of students graduating in the four years and in the six-years mark. And so even still, you can see that even in some of these more selective universities, again, some students are still taking more than four years, which is something we've all kind of talked about as part of a greater national conversation through the years. But it looks like some of our state schools are starting to make some progress in that area. And a lot of it probably has to do with some of the things that we're all doing to help them not need remediation or to help them have college credits when they arrive at the state schools. So let's take a look at our GCIC students. This is kind of what Jorge was talking about. It's the idea of how long is it taking them really to, to make it to graduation? And then after that, we'll look at, well, how many kids report back to school after taking that gap year kind of idea? And you can see that, you can see across here where it says four-year total, that it really kind of has stayed about the same that for the past three groups there was staying almost right at forty percent. And then the six-year total is more in the sixties. Remember, the National Student Clearinghouse does that number as from all of your graduates, not the percentage of your graduates who actually started college. So the actual, if you, am I saying that right? Yes. So basically, if I say, well, that's, this is from all one thousand graduates, but actually only eight hundred and fifty of the graduates started school at any point after high school, that percentage would look a little bit different. This is based on everybody. So when you look.
Just to clarify, is our number of students that go, that go to college straight out of the graduation from high school. You said around eighty percent, eighty percent, then you will have to divide sixty-two, sixty-two or eighty to see the real number of college-going students that graduate in six years. Is that what you're saying?
Essentially. So I work, kind of work it out for us over here on this next slide. But, so what I do is, is I go back and I look at how many students did they find enrolled in school at some point? And then I work it through and I say, okay, of the students who actually enrolled in college after high school, not the whole class, what percentage are graduating in a set number of years? And so those boxes at the top, those will correspond to each class. So for example, in 2011, seventy-seven percent of the students who started college at some point after high school did end up with a degree in six years. But, so when you talk about that group of students who start college immediately after high school or at some point after high school, it stays in that seventy-one, seventy-seven kind of range in terms of getting a degree, some sort of degree in the six years. So when we talk about tho, those board goal strategies for CCMR, some of the conversations that we're having centers around focusing on readiness and access and information and encouragement so that they know, for example, is this school going to be good fit for me? How do I plan to afford it? All of those factors that make them be successful in terms of being able to finish on time and to finish at all. This next one here is the one that shows us, okay, how, what percentage from year to year were new to college or not in the National Student Clearinghouse. Remember, this is just the Clearinghouse data. It's not our go-back-and-call-people data. But it can show you there. So for example, in the class of 2018, we have about eighty-one percent there who were new to college right after high school graduation. And then we have the percentage there that, who, that eighteen percent who weren't in the service itself. Trying to move my little pictures around there. And also, we had some who were point six, who already graduated. So one year later, that could be possibly students who were working on a two-year degree. And so they were able to finish it because they already had, they finished up with an associate's and maybe they went on to college, but it does, once they hit that associate's, stop tracking them. But what you can see over time is when students are new to college. So look right here at the class of 2017. You had kids who, at the end of last year, two-point-three percent were new to college. So they didn't go right after their, their, or after graduation. They didn't go in that first fall after high school graduation. For the class of 2017, two-point-three percent of the class were new to college at that moment. And let me, I'm going to try to flip some of my paper here to where we actually look at that particular class. Okay, so class of 2017, what's interesting is when I go back and I look at our graduate find information, and we had one percent who were pursuing an interest area, taking a gap year, they were out of the country. And we had point one who were taking a mission trip. And we had some of the students, about five percent of the students who are working to save money to go to college. So when you kind of look at those numbers, you see, these are kids who were thinking about going to college. They just couldn't go immediately, or they knew they needed a chance to take that gap year, to think and make sure that they were making the right choice for themselves, or do that mission trip while they still had the opportunity. So it's reassuring to see that even though they tell us, I'm taking a gap year, they do, they'll, they do come back. They do end up starting school. So that's exciting to see right there. Now, obviously, when we talk about the class of 2019, this is based, this data that we get in the fall is based on the end of last school year. So obviously, we didn't have, the class of 2019 just graduated. When they collect this data in the fall, they're just now enrolling. So we didn't, or they hadn't enrolled yet. And so that's why we don't have where they are on this particular chart. So.
What's this, these data requested, like, what's the date of that?
They do it each November is when they run it so that we can get everybody who enrolled right after school. So this one would be, but because this goes back and says, okay, who, who persisted? It has to have that extra year in there to get that number as far as, okay, well, who's, you know, who all? To get you the precision data. So I don't have 2019 on this particular chart. That's where we tell you, hey, those are the ones that were new. And the National Student Clearinghouse for 2019 said, well, they found seventy-three percent of the students in college.
Okay. Thank you.
And so then, this is the group of, that shows us what are the twenty most frequently selected schools from the time that the Student Clearinghouse has been collecting data. And then over there to the right, that shows you the schools that the class nineteen was found predominantly in. And there's a few, a few of them changing around in there. And then also too, I do adjust for the whole, the whole Texas Tech. Why it doesn't always show up in the National Student Clearinghouse. So I do adjust that one because I know it's a, I know it's an issue through the years. So there are those. And that's really all I have for you. I just want to say congratulations to the class of 2020. I know the district's doing a lot to celebrate all of them. And I'm very interested to see what college looks like for them this particular fall. And to also be able to see, you know, just what college enrollment is going to look like following all of these closures, whether students will go ahead and go on to schools that have state or if financial aid or changing of financial situations for their family. Do to all of the COVID-19 closures and economic situations, if that'll impact it. Or if we, you know, they call it summer melt when the kids don't say they're coming and then they don't show up in the fall. So it'll be, I, I think it's good that we're going to have a lot of interesting information. My hope is though, is that they do find their way to those post-secondary pathways that they had intended for themselves. And thank you for listening to all that at this hour of the evening.
Thank you, Shannon. Trustees, I can't see, and I think, do we have any questions for Shannon?
Yes, Lisa, it's Becky. I have a couple of questions.
Okay.
So number one, I, I know, I know we have a lot going on, but the number of kids that we're missing is eleven percent, which is about a hundred. I think, in order to keep our methodology the same, I would strongly encourage us to find out if the, where those kids were. Because we're going to need that data to be as accurate as possible, given that this class, the class of 2020, is going to be vastly different, I think. You mentioned a number of reasons that kids may change their minds on what their plans were this fall. Another one being, you know, some, some kids and some parents are not thrilled with the idea that college might be online only and they may, they may pull a gap year for that reason as well. But thinking back to our presentation, our LEAD 2021 highlight earlier, have we ever tracked how well our Avid students are reflected in these numbers? Do they have a higher persistence, a lower persistence, or the same? I think that would be something that would be informative to us, especially, especially curious in some of the breakouts in those, the two-year to four-year numbers, kind of what Jorge was mentioning earlier, that we don't know, I guess it's tough to tell from the information you get from the Clearinghouse if, as you're looking at the numbers through the years, if those kids transferred from a two-year university to a four-year university. And so I, I don't know how we could tease that out, except maybe, you know, finding out what our Avid students are doing might help inform some of our decision-making on this as well. So I would love to see where our Avid students shake out in, in some of this data.
That does seem to be, and that's came up a little bit earlier too today, I think from Jorge and then Dr. Schoutz. We built a framework to start looking through it, and I can go through National Student Clearinghouse and see from year to year where the National Student Clearinghouse is finding that particular student. So I think it is something that we can build. I do think that with the CCMR board goals coming forward in terms of looking at strategies, that the, the campus principals would probably want to see that sort of data to see, you know, how is Avid making an impact? And how can we build on the things that are working well there?
Thank you. That's all I had. Thank you, Becky. Do we have questions?
I have a question. I believe this is something we could ask at National Clearinghouse, but I don't know, we have asked before. Have we ever asked them to give us information on majors? Like, for example, student changing majors in between their, inside their college career?
I do.
They, they give that data to, I know that, I believe they give it to UTA. So it's like, when a student transfers from UTA to, let's say, University of Houston, I can see when they graduated from the University of Houston, I also can see their majors. And even if they change majors, I could see it. I was wondering if you guys have ever asked for that information?
I have not asked that. I would love to see if they can do it. You know, because the reality is, is when you change schools, it slows you down towards graduation typically. Changing majors, most likely, is going to slow you down. Yeah. So I'll see if they can do that for us.
Thank you. And also, just want to mention that when you show, I don't know, you had come back, I know that there's a slide where you show graduation rates of each college, and I think you, you kind of show the public ones first and then the private ones. So I, I, I do believe, like, you go back to the previous one. The one that, yeah, that one. So I believe those numbers do not include transfers. So basically, I know UT Arlington, for example, forty-eight percent of the kids graduate in six years, but there's a bunch of kids that transfer out of UTA into UT Austin, for example. And that number hurts, you know, it brings down the number to forty-eight percent. Now, they dropped because they went to another college. So just want to let you know that that's, you know, that, that's also, is something that needs to be taken into consideration because a lot of kids are transferring.
You are correct. And so when we look at this slide from year to year, I do usually bring that forward, and I appreciate you doing it because I didn't this year. And the reality is, is that some students do choose some of our local four-year universities for a variety of reasons. Maybe they're not ready to live away from home, maybe they're trying to save money, et cetera. And then, so there is kind of a, maybe a commuter aspect to us, you know, living in the metroplex. We're so blessed to have so many great universities that our kids can drive from, drive to and from and not have, move away right away. And so that is true, that when you look at those four and six-year graduation rates for some of our schools that do have more of that aspect, that local aspect, that is true. That it doesn't include students who then, I left UNT and, or UT Arlington, and I transferred to UT or wherever, and I graduated from there. Then UT Arlington does not show that student as a graduate. That's right.
Thank you.
Do we have any other questions? None. Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, well, thanks you guys. Thank you for everything you're doing.
You take care. Good to see you.
Thank you, Shannon. Great job, Shannon.
Thank you, sir.
There we go. We'll move on to item M, 2019, 2020 Budget Update.
Yeah, so this is our monthly update for this current year's budget. And so, Diane, I'll turn it over to you.
Okay. We will go ahead and just look at the numbers on page ninety-six. We have, currently have ten months worth of actual data to trend off of. So we're getting, we're getting really close towards the end now. And there are not a lot of changes from last month. On our revenues, we're, we're projecting revenues to be a hundred and thirty-seven point seven million versus a budget of a hundred and thirty-four point three million. And so we have a, have a favorable variance of about three. And so we have a, have a favorable variance of about 3.4 million. The majority of that variance is due to our state funding being 3, 3.4 more million more than what we budgeted. Just once all of the final information was given to us. You know, we, we built this budget on just very, very preliminary numbers. So that is a really, really good thing we have there. On the expenditure side, our projections are 139.3 million compared to a budget of 140.1 million. And so we, we continue to have a favorable variance of about 1.6 million on the expenditure side. Now in June, we will be making adjustments on the, the current budget to reflect more of what the revenues are. And we typically keep the budget on the expenditure side the same. So we'll hopefully continue to see that favorable variance at the end of the fiscal year. So based on these numbers, we're looking at a use of fund balance of 1.6 million. Of course, we budgeted to use 6.6 million. So it's significantly less than what we budgeted. And this will leave us with an ending fund balance of 55.3 million.
Any questions? Thank you, Diane. Any questions? None? Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Item E, update on the 2016 bond program.
Yes, we do have several things to update the board about. So I'll turn this over to Paula.
Thank you, Dr. Ryan. And Kyle, if you'll turn me over to presenter. Is Gary on? Oh, with video this time.
I'm here. Can you hear? Paula, can you hear me? Awesome.
Yes, we can hear you. How's that?
Perfect.
Beautiful.
All set?
Yes, sir. Go for it.
Okay. Good evening. Hi Paula. Good evening, trustees. Dr. Ryan, it's good to be with you again. I really miss you guys. Really, really miss you guys. So hopefully this, this doesn't last too much longer, but I'll do my best to kind of move through this update for you. Just to kind of keep you posted on, on what we've got going on, what the district has going on. We're going to start at Grapevine High School. Gym floor, that floor is now fully demolished and removed. The existing bleachers in that area, excuse me, were removed or moved last Friday. Just in preparation for the remainder of that floor to get stained and then they'll reinstall the bleachers. So that whole process then is a couple of week duration. The control vestibule, as we've been talking about for a couple of months, is now complete. And the existing administrative area around that area are also now complete, fully operational. So that's good news. Also, the stage floor demolition is ongoing. Part of the bond program was to, to replace that floor. And so the reinstallation of the subfloor and the new floor with the black paint is, is nearing completion there as well. So lots of, lots of good, exciting work there. Just a couple of pictures here from the installation of the new gym floor. What you see here are, are just the wood, the new wood slats that are, they, once they get acclimated to the space, they'll start to lay those out. But before they do, that black paper is that moisture barrier that they put down over the entire slab. So any type of moisture that, that's coming up through the slab, that, that keeps it away from the floor. And that floor is on about an inch and a half sleeper is what they call it. So there is a small void under there. So here you see a couple of shots of really the, the raw unfinished wood. It's, it's a maple floor as specified. It's a gorgeous floor. And so then it's all put together and is also still acclimating to the space. So progress is doing, is looking really good. Here are a couple of shots of the, the kiosk locations, the new kiosks at the entry, control vestibule. Now, so you see how they're situated, situated, excuse me, within that, within that room. And then on the right, just a, a final finished picture. We've been seeing pictures of that area now for a while, but you see the floor, the cabinets, really they've moved in and, and they're using it really well. So really, really proud of that space. A couple of additional pictures here that, of the carpeting, the paint and the floor finishes, mascots being reinstalled, et cetera. So it really kind of livened up that, that area with a fresh coat of paint and, and new floor finishes.
Just make sure that everybody can recognize underneath that Mustang on the wall there is where Jerry's desk was located. And as you can see, that's been removed, opened up that area, that waiting area. Able to get down to that hallway a little bit easier. New carpet has been installed. And right on the other side of the blue sign, of course, is where some of the administrative assistants will be moving to that were down the steps away. So they will now be at that window because attendance has moved out front. So space looks good. Just waiting for people to come back to move into it.
Ready. Moving over to Grapevine Elementary School, the interior of the addition is now complete. It's all, as I say, punched out and, and finished up by, by Lee Lewis. So that's looking really, really nice. The exterior now really has to finish out with the sod installation around the building. Hydro as well around the rest of the site that was disturbed by construction. So that's looking good. Had a really nice rain, which helped the other day quite a bit. Get some establishment going on that, on that work. And then the building final, really where they called for the city to finalize the building in terms of life safety, et cetera. That's going to be happening towards the end of this week. So you can see just a couple of shots here, the, the retaining walls, new retaining walls as they tier down. If you recall, you could kind of run out of that one hallway and, and literally roll down the hill as far as you, as you wanted to. So those retaining walls really help with that. You can see just a couple of more shots here, sod installation on the right-hand side picture through the rest of the site. So really looking good. At Glenn Hope Elementary School, the insulation and sheathing work continues. The, the removal of all the suspect material at the restrooms in terms of asbestos and other types of material, that's now complete. The exterior gip sheathing, what you see in the green boards there and window framing continues at the, at those particular classroom areas. The brick veneer work there to button that whole area work starts this week. And again, about a two-week duration to finish out there. And then they'll finish with landscaping irrigation begin the last week of May.
Jerry, let me clarify that it was not asbestos that we had at the building. This was the suspect material at the restroom. So I just want to clarify that.
Apologize.
All right.
Really here is just a larger view. It's pieced a couple of pictures together. Really what I wanted to show here is all of the work happening in that one area with the window framing, gip sheathing, metal stud, reinstallation. And so that's, that's just sort of a larger picture of what all is going on at this location. So it looks good. The summer 2020 renovation projects will start really with overall discussion on the elementary school portion of the project. Shop drawings, which are part of the construction process where they submit to us for review. Everything that they're going to put back into that building that we've specified. So that's the shop drawing process. They're arriving heavily at this point. I'm Lee Lewis and we're starting to review those in terms of mechanical, electrical and plumbing items to go back into those campuses. Construction start date is June 5th to allow campuses to close down and their, and complete their packing activities. So June 5th is the date there. The required construction procedures are being completed, finalized subcontractor contracts and schedule of values. So really all of the, all of the contractual work that Lee Lewis is having to do to, to move forward and to get their subcontractor starting is, is happening now as it should. So that's all looking good. Swim Center, the plumbing fixtures associated with this renovation and the flooring will begin this week. So all, all those are on site and they'll start to be installed this week. The millwork for this project will arrive May 20th and install begins the first week of June. And then the pool will be drained beginning this, this week and will take several weeks to do that. It's quite a bit of water. So there's a lot of plaster work to happen and some tile work around the edges to happen there. So, so that pool needs to be drained. And then all exterior paving work is complete and all the striping will, will happen at the end of May. Just a couple of shots here showing you some interior on the left, some of the ceiling work, overhead work that's happening in a couple of those offices in the back. And on the right, the CMU partition there, we're having to add a shower, some shower work and shower head and reinstallation. And in one or two of those bathrooms there. So ongoing work there. And then finally here, just some of the paving that got put back. As part of the bond program, there were quite a few areas around the district, in particular here, identified to redo some of the paving that is, that had failed over time, et cetera. So there's some paving and sidewalk, sidewalk work there. And then further GCISD projects, I wanted to show just a few shots. Obviously been raining for a little bit, but really the continuation of the waterproofing around the building. I think last month we talked or showed the trenches around the building. And so they're starting to backfill and, and work bottom up to do some of the waterproofing before the window work starts there. So just some shots around the building there, I think on the next one as well. Some of the electrical gas work here on the far left and the electrical, existing electrical lines coming in. So a lot of care being taken to not to hit and damage all that. And again, all around the backside, similar with the waterproofing. And then the Cross Timbers Middle School Creek Study, we, we hadn't talked about this in a little while. But we are now at a point to bring you the update on the geo, geotechnical testing work. Which is going to begin with those services scheduled for Tuesday, May 19th. So, so a lot of testing work is going to start, the drilling for those tests, for those borings. Those dates are yet to be determined. We're still working on schedules with, with our engineers. And the civil work portion of that, the surveys are starting now. We'll bring you the timeline for survey, geotech and drawings in, in greater detail. But roughly it's going to be about a four-month duration. Okay. So that's the, that's the update for tonight and this month. And happy to answer any questions you might have.
Gary, anyone have any questions? No? It's good to see you.
It's great to see you. Thank you. Thanks for having me.
Thank you, Gary.
All right. Good night.
Thanks, Gary.
Stay safe. Okay. Move on to item O, act, review owner contingency expenditures. Dr. Ryan?
Yes, we just have a couple of items that are additional on the owner contingency expenditures and will be subject to your question.
Seeing none, we'll move on to item P, review the 2020, 2021 board planning calendar.
It says the board probably noticed this starts this month and goes forward. Typically the planning calendar is something that we're, we're looking at a couple of months behind. But now this is for the next, the next school year. And so Kim has worked really hard to try to adjust some of the things that we needed to move around or that we've moved around several years in a row. We just tried to put them, go ahead and put them in the month that we're dealing with them. You can only see a couple of, a couple of items that are changing. The MOU with the JJ AEP, of course, is on delay and then graduation is moved into June for these two items. Everything else in this month is stayed the same.
Thank you, Dr. Ryan. Any questions? Thank you, Kim. I move on to item Q, request for reports to the board. Seeing none, move on to consent agenda. Do you have a motion? Jesse?
I move to re-accept items eight through K on the consent agenda.
Thank you, Jesse. In a second. Mindy? Thank you, Mindy. Any questions, comments? Seeing none? All those in favor of A through K? There we go. I tell you what, this has not been a... Yes, Jesse?
I have an announcement.
Yes, thanks, Steve.
Yeah. I just wanted to tell my, yeah, I just wanted to express to my fellow trustees that I have finished my tenure on the North Texas Area Association of School Boards. And so my term is, is complete. So I will be stepping down from, from that organization. And Mindy McClure has graciously accepted to go, go in my spot. So we will be reaching out to Mindy, but she will now be on the executive board for the North Texas Area Association of School Boards. So congratulations to Mindy.
Thank you. I'm excited about it. Thank you, Jesse. Thank you for your time served.
Well, thank you. It's, it's been a pleasure. I really have enjoyed that. And it's going to be an exciting time, Mindy, as, as the school year starts in terms of what we end up doing this next year. Of course, there's four meetings that will be planned and, and if everything goes according to schedule, then we'll have them. Maybe even have an April meeting next year, which we didn't for the past years. But anyway, I want to wish, you know, the, the executive board and TASB, they've done an awesome thing. And we continue to get more school districts and superintendents to attend. And, and of course, the credit that we offer and all of that has been great. So I, I wish you a lot of, you know, a lot of success. And I know you're going to enjoy your time on the board there. So congratulations.
Well, thank you. You've got, you have big shoes to fill. So.
Well, thanks.
Mindy, thank you for taking that on and we appreciate that. I know your schedule is busy as Jesse. So thank you very much for doing that. TASB, we still, even though summer leadership is not taking place in person, we still have to, hours. And registration opens up June 1st and we still need to go on and register for classes. Just letting y'all know if y'all did not see that, I know. An email was sent out from TASB to everyone and then also we received it through the district. So just to remind you that June 1st is registration day. So it's going to be interesting to see how, how that's going to work. But we are still required to get those hours in. Graduations are in June. Dr. Ryan, did you want to touch on that? I know there's been a lot, a lot of work put into getting our graduations up and getting going. I think the parents are going to be excited. The, the graduates will be excited. They get to walk across the stage.
Yes, our, our high school principals and their teams have done a tremendous job of being pretty nimble and agile. As, as the things have changed over the last, really over the last month. And so I think they've put together a really good plan. And, and just to make sure everybody understands, we have to follow the guidelines that TEA provides for graduations. And so there are written guidelines that reflect the governor's orders that we have to abide by when having a large outdoor gathering like a graduation. So that's why we can't just open the gates and let every, everybody come in. We have to adhere to social distancing and, and there's a 25% capacity rule and that kinds of things. So, so our team has done a really good job of trying to adjust. And we, we feel like that we're going to provide a fantastic opportunity for our seniors to walk across the stage and pick up their diploma. And head out to go, go do thing, go do good things. And it's going to be a tremendous evening for their families as well. And we're going to live stream it for the folks that are not, unable to attend. And so we're... And so we're excited to have this in-person opportunity for our seniors.
That's great. We get to use that stadium. Lots of fans will get to see the stadium. So. Any other announcements? I can't see half of you, so if you have anything to say. This is, I, I'm wondering if they cut a cable in the back. I won't say which company was back in the back.
I think we can guess.
Yeah.
I'm thinking they're listening. I didn't use the name of the company.
They didn't want to take any chances, though.
Oh, gosh. So any other announcements, guys? None? Need a motion to adjourn?
I so move.
Thank you, Jesse. Two second?
Louis.
Louis, thank you so much. And all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Thank you all very much. Meeting adjourned. Stay safe, stay well. And, and I hope to look forward to seeing you, actually getting to see you in person at graduation. So.